Email my text.
Find your phone.
I can't believe these things.
There may be some. Yeah, I think. Do we have this?
Yeah. Yeah.
Recording in progress.
Like to call this special meeting of the Sciop Township Board of Trustees to order at 7:02. After we call the roll, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Flintoff?
Present.
Brazil?
Present.
Noel?
Absent.
McLaughlin?
Present.
Reiser?
Present.
You have forum.
Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Item is the adoption of the agenda. Is there no changes to the agenda? Or a motion to approve?
To approve of the agenda?
Second.
Support.
We have a motion by Reiser, support by Palmer. I'm sorry, were you seeking to?
Speak.
Speak, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was just, I just wanted to clarify one thing on unfinished business items A, B, C, D. The cover page, they said they were submitted by our assessor. And I know Will, you'll, you'll explain this, but they were prepared and submitted by our supervisor. And then, I don't know if this needs to be a change to the agenda, Will. But I would like at some point for Mike Homier to give kind of a brief overview of kind of what we're doing here tonight with this stuff. I know I've talked to John about it, so I don't know where you want to do that. But was thinking that might be good to do maybe at the top of the public hearings.
Sure.
Great.
We can, we can do that. Just to clarify about the identification of the agenda items. The drop down menu offers several choices of sort of where the, in my view, where, where the item is associated. So sometimes I'm, when I'm preparing an item, it's a planning commission item and I'll select planning commission. Even though I as the supervisor and the person who is preparing the agenda item. In this case, it seemed that the assessor was the option that made the most sense. It's not meant to apply that, imply that the assessor prepared the item.
Or assessed the costs.
Right.
Right.
So that's why I selected that one. It is a little unusual. I, probably one of the few times I've selected assessor as an agenda identifier. Are there any other questions before we approve the agenda? In that case, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda is approved. That brings us to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees. And when you are present, we do turn first to those who are present in the meeting hall. Please come to the table, have a seat and address your comments to the board as a whole. And Trustee McLaughlin is great to serve as our timekeeper. And then, once we have heard from everyone who is present who wants to speak, then we'll turn to those who are participating remotely and give them a turn.
A reason.
Sure.
A public hearings on the SADs. People wanting to speak on those should they?
Oh, that's a good clarification.
They should wait until then?
Yes, yes, thank you for clarifying that. We don't have these kind of public hearings very often, that's a good point. If you are here to speak to one of the SADs to, as a, as a topic. I ask that you wait until we get to the public hearing and speak at that time. This, this public comment time is for anything other than those items that are the subject of the public hearings. Thank you. So if you have something that you would like to share with us on a topic other than one of these public hearings, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Brad, continue to be a Sciop citizen. I want to talk today about, and I'm on the consent agenda. And this is really about sound fiscal policy. So I use this as an example. It's the PUD regarding Parkland plan as a senior living site plan extension. So I want to note that this is the third extension for this property. So this is the third time it's gone through the Planning Commission, it's the third time it's come to this board. It's the third time that our planner, Carlisle Wardman, worked on this. I had a discussion with Mr. Luan about this very topic. We were quite a bit in disagreement on fiscal responsible policy. And I would hope that the board will start to look at our fees. Currently, we allow developers to come and talk to our planner as many times as they like. It is an unlimited situation. I requested that the Plan Commission put some language in the zoning about how many times a developer or homeowner can come and speak to the planner, because that costs us money. And so here's a perfect example of something that is costing us money that we are not at all recovering. So I, I really would like to see us look at our fee schedule, but also can we put in some boundaries that are reasonable for how many times a developer can come to Doug Luan, Luan and ask him, how can I get around the zoning? How can I get around the planning? Because that's the way I see it. I'll give an example as, as Heron, Heron Farms for their party barn. They came in front of the Planning Commission and that proposal was denied. And it was denied on sound basis that they do not have, they did not have a farming business. They still don't have a farming business. But they met with Mr. Luan, they met with Mr. Luan's, they met with Jan Culbertson multiple times, multiple times. They came back in front of the Planning Commission multiple times until finally they were granted their conditional use. So want to object to the access to our staff, but I also object to how we're wasting so much money and not recovering it from developers. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening. Pat Stein, Sciop Township President, many years. The Sciop Township has an attorney, Michael Homier, of the firm Foster Swift. Sciop Township pays that firm $275 an hour for Mr. Homier to sit on call behind the video screens throughout each hour of each board trustee meetings. During those public comments at the last meeting, fellow resident Rob Pattinson gave us this year's running total through September 14th for Foster Swift as big, over $80,000. So you ask yourself, how can that be? How can we hire someone to sit on call during the lengthy board meetings, getting paid $275 an hour? Well, this all started when Will Hathaway first met Michael Homier in the express checkout line at the local Kroger store and ran home to the board and asked, can I keep him? Well, it's not really true, but the truth is just as unbelievable. In December, Will Hathaway showed up with an agenda item to approve a letter of engagement for legal services with Foster Swift. This motion came with many red flags. For instance, Will added it to the agenda of the very last board meeting of the year. The board was totally blindsided by this. There were no previous deliberations or discussions on exactly what the board felt their needs would be regarding additional legal services. No bidding process had been followed. Lastly, the Foster Swift letter of engagement for Sciop Township was actually signed by Michael Homier 13 days before the board members even saw it. Needless to say, Supervisor Hathaway's motion was pushed through with all the votes needed from his three slate mates, trustees that have all since resigned from this board this year. The motion we were presented last December was for Foster Swift to provide necessary legal support. I believe sitting on call after meeting after meeting, hour after hour of a rate of 275 goes way beyond necessary support. The negotiated rate of $275 an hour runs out at the end of next month. At that time, Foster Swift has the option to increase their rate. This board also has an option. That option would be to terminate this agreement by merely sending off a letter to Foster Swift saying your services are no longer needed. I, along with many Sciop presidents, believe the total cost of legal services is wasteful spending by this board and strongly request that you terminate these services before this wasteful spending rolls into next year at an even higher cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Is there anyone else who chooses to, or would like to speak during public comment? If that's the case, then is there anyone participating remotely?
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. I'm willing to talk to you this evening about something we have talked about before the audit. I understand we still have standing questions or outstanding issues to discuss with the auditor. I do want to make the board aware of the statements. Actually, I have another delinquency letter just today, earlier this afternoon, filed for the delinquent. And they're requesting that it be filed as quickly as possible. This is extremely important to Sciop Township. We need to get the audit complete. We need to get the audit sent to the state so we can be truly receiving. I know I don't speak alone. I don't join my, especially for something that we can do to resolve an issue fairly straightforward and relatively quickly with the help of our staff as well as our auditors of this, minus the outstanding issues. I would encourage you, if you need to set a working session, whatever you need to do in order to get this audit complete, to do as quickly, as accurately as possible. Thank you.
Rob Pattinson?
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Sciop Township. For tonight's special BOT, there's, there are 63 parcel owners within the four SADs. Did the township notify those 63 owners of tonight's special board meeting? I know the supervisor doesn't think public comment is a time for back and forth, but I have several questions and I think our two new trustees deserve answers. What was so urgent that required a special board meeting to be called with a week's notice? That's number one. Number two, what is the legal liability of the township if it chooses not to use the proper assessing method for calculating each parcel's share of the SAD? Joe Turner's presentation revealed that just splitting the cost equally between each parcel is not allowed, is not an allowed method. The assessor must calculate the value of the parcel with and without the SAD. The change in value is the direct benefit to that individual parcel and therefore the basis for what that parcel's share of the SAD is. That means there should be 63 individual direct benefit calculations for tonight's four SADs. That is not the case. Instead, there are, there are four SADs with the cost split evenly between the parcels of each SAD. Does that make these SADs illegal? Three, we now know that one of the reasons for tonight's special meeting was to sneak through the private road project on East Elhi. Thankfully, the supervisor got caught last week and that dirty trick has been removed from tonight's agenda. I wonder Supervisor Hathaway, what benefit do you get from that attempt? You remember that East Elhi residents have an attorney to represent their interests to the township? You remember that there are attorneys among those residents? Do you think they wouldn't sue the township if this dirty trick had worked? I'm willing to bet that they, nor their attorney, had any notice that you planned to call a surprise meeting. Those of us who have witnessed several dirty tricks over the last two years aren't surprised by this latest one. I believe it's critical our new trustees understand this trend and demand an explanation. Tonight's meeting is about SADs. Why is this meeting happening tonight when the Roads Advisory Committee is having an informational meeting tomorrow with legal analysis and advice on how to properly manage SADs? We have a history of improper SADs. Why is it so urgent to repeat past mistakes tonight? Perhaps Trustee Reiser can help with this question. Are these SADs contracts? If so, is it legal to change the amounts charged to residents after the SADs are agreed to without all parties agreeing to the change? Seems illegal to change a contract after the fact. I understand there are still questions about what charges will be included and or removed from the four SADs as recently as this morning. Why is this process so slapdash that even this morning, the numbers aren't solid? Again, with a long history of dirty tricks and manipulation, I believe our trustees must ask questions and demand answers of this supervisor. The urgency required to call a special meeting doesn't make sense. What's my concern?
Was he just muted? Was he just muted?
No, no, I wasn't.
It certainly sounded like it.
That's FYI, Township Hall is locked up here for about the last 15 seconds.
Yeah, no, but I think they may have called on me. I was asked to unmute, is that accurate?
That's Jonathan?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so Jonathan, 6250 Park Road, soon to be 6089 Green Mountain Circle. It's the United States Post Office. We just updated their database, we've only been asking for about six months. I guess that's neither here nor there, you don't have control of that. Why are we using a expensive attorney from Grand Rapids when we have one here already? Don't we have a, an attorney, Sciop Township attorney? So why are we going off and hire, why, why are we spending, close to now, if my calculations are correct, close to $100,000 for this guy to sit on meetings? I mean, $100,000, seriously? Seriously? No, I'm, I'm asking you, seriously, $100,000, what have we gotten for that? I can't imagine the benefit being worth the cost. We already have, oh, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, it's not $100,000, I just got a text. It's 97, $762 and 14 cents. What are we getting for that? Why are we using our own attorney? And why does the supervisor need his own personal attorney? To play these dirty tricks that my friend and neighbor, Rob Pattinson, so clearly outlined in his comments? Just beyond me, $100,000. $100,000. Can we please stop that? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
That is it? All right, let's move on then to our consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Is someone prepared to move approval of the consent agenda?
So moved?
Moved by Flintoff, support by Brazil. There's no expenditure, so we can do this on a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Oh, I skipped over approval of minutes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, there are none.
There are none. Okay, so on to public hearings. Before we call the public hearings, it's been suggested that we have a brief explanation from Mike Homier as to what it is that we're doing this evening. I think that could be helpful and.
And a little bit about the time, the urgency, what, what are the headlines we're looking at?
Right, right. Yes, and just to clarify, this meeting was not called on a week's notice. But let's have an explanation from Mike Homier, if he's available. Hey, Mike?
Good evening.
So did you, did you hear the request?
I did. So there are four special assessments. I'll first address the meeting issue because the first levy for these special assessments will occur on December the first, when every, I shouldn't say every special assessment is levied. Most special assessments are levied on December first. Act 188 actually allows the board to set the date, but then after that, it would be levied on December first. So this is November, which means the rolls have to be confirmed so it can get to printing on the tax bill and that would be included on the tax bill. That's the urgency of the meeting. It's just a matter of getting it to the printer and getting the, the special assessment placed on the tax roll. The reason why we're here really is because a couple of different things. For some of these special assessment district, there was actually an increase in the incremental cost compared to the estimate. So once the construction is finished, all the invoices come in, there are variations between estimated costs and actual costs. So in three of those instances, I believe that the cost, the incremental cost has gone up. And in one of those, it was overestimated and has gone down. So in the one that is, has, has been reduced, that cost will, if the board adopts the resolution, decrease that. But there were, and, and a public hearing would not normally be required under that circumstance either, except for my understanding, when these were initially confirmed, was that the township agreed that these would be payable in installments, which is permitted under Act 188, over a period of time. The term of that time was 10 years, meaning that the district, along with the payment terms over time, would exist for 10 years. But it was devoid too of any interest on those payments over time. And my understanding was that it has been the past practice of the township to set that interest rate at 5%. That is permissible again under Act 188, because in none of these projects, as I understand it, did the township issue bonds. If the township had issued bonds to finance these projects, then the township is limited to charging 1% over the rate payable on the bonds. But because there are no bonds here, the township may charge interest up to 8% per annum. So we have a couple of things going on here. One is the incremental cost increase on three out of the four, but also the, sorry?
Only, only two of them had a cost increase. One is, had no cost increase at all and one went down.
Yes, sorry. So two of them had a cost increase, incremental cost increase. And two of them, one of them is staying the same and the other one is decreasing. But in those two other instances as well, we need to define the term and set the term for repayment over time. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody can't pay it early because a record owner may pay off the special assessment at any time during the term of the special assessment and not be responsible for interest accruing on those principal payments that would otherwise be due over time. And so, but we have to set those requirements within the resolution confirming the roll. So in each instance, we're holding a public hearing, one, to address the incremental cost increase or the supplemental special assessment that's necessary to cover the deficiency, which again is permissible under Act 188, and to set the payment terms over time, that being 10 years and an interest rate of 5%. So that's two of them. The other one is decreasing and that will revise the special assessment rule amount, but yet set the term to the same 10 years and 5% if it's payable over time. And the, the last one is staying the same, but again, sets the payment terms to 10 years and 5%.
I have one question I can ask. Is one, is, I assume it's a standard simple interest loan, is that customary?
Yeah, so it's 5% per annum on the unpaid principal balance. Depending on when it was paid, then it would accrue on the outstanding principal, that's correct.
And then what is standard and customary from your experience from other township districts in terms of the interest that you've seen them charge? Is it a reasonable fee, unreasonable fee, the rate? What, what have you seen, is it a LIBOR plus one, a variable rate, or is it always a fixed rate?
It's always a fixed rate because it's equal, and it's equal under the statute when the roll is confirmed, okay? So because you could, if you had, say, for instance, a LIBOR plus one, you could actually end up over 8% per annum, which would not be permissible. So that's why the terms of that resolution setting the payment terms will have varying different interest rates. And each of our clients charge a different rate. So I can't tell you that there's a standard practice. It just depends on what the township expects in terms of loaning its money out, because the township is essentially acting as a sort of financial institution, loaning taxpayer money out upfront to do the project and then getting repaid over time with interest.
So let me ask this a different way. Again, I know your clients said they vary. Is it, can you give me a range or at least maybe an average?
Zero to 8%.
Okay.
Some of our, some of our clients don't charge any interest. I don't, I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily agree with that policy because it's an opportunity cost for the rest of the taxpayers, right? To earn interest on those monies that would have otherwise been invested pursuant to the township's investment policy. That investment policy, however, is probably earning somewhere between, right now, probably 2 and 3% max, somewhere in there. But then you've got the administration and overhead charge as well, which you can collect for by imposition of that interest rate, but not by an administrative fee like you would on tax collection.
Another question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, John. Mark, are you done?
I don't want to interrupt, Mark.
You know, Mike. John and then Jessica.
Well, hello, my name is John Reiser. I'm the new guy here and I don't want to interrupt your presentation if you have more to present. So, I don't want to, the cameras, there's all kinds of cameras. So, hello. If you're, if you're finished, I'll ask some questions. If you're not, I'll just wait till the end of your presentation, sir.
No, I'm. No, I'm done, uh, feel free.
Okay, so, um. Does SIO Township, if you know, or should townships have a written policy on how they treat special assessment districts?
That's a good question, so typically, we don't have written policies on some improvements. My clients do have written policies on private road improvements, because you get into a situation where if you had a lot of requests, then you might be faced with a situation where you cannot fund all of those requests, and so they set up some criteria or guidelines on the front end. And that's purposeful, so for example, Act one eighty-eight allows you to require petitions. Those petitions would have to be signed by more than fifty percent of the record owners of property in the proposed district. The reason why you do that is so that you have support for the SAD, because you will incur costs upfront, like engineering costs, administrative costs, all of which can be rolled into the SAD, but only if you confirm the special assessment district. So if you don't get petitions, if it's, say, a township-initiated special assessment district, and you don't have petitions signed by record owners of at least fifty percent of, of the record owners in the district, then twenty percent of those, uh, record owners in the district can object in writing and stop the project, until you have those petitions signed.
Okay, so, um, I do have public Act one eighty-eight in front of me, and I perused it, and, um, some of the questions I have is, it talks about, there's, uh, shall be cause to be prepared, um, these cost estimates. Who typically does that, who, how does a township or municipality kind of come up with how much it's going to cost? And I also have the, uh, Special Assessments Technical Manual for Townships, and there's like fourteen different things that we can charge, construction costs, engineering costs, financial consultant, legal costs, supplies, postage, administrative costs, and then it talks about bond expenses, then it talks about audit and financial statements, so. How do townships, or what advice do you give to townships on how they should, in a transparent fashion, kind of devise what these are, and then apportion them a- among the SAD?
So those actual costs, and I know it's very broad, but under the statute, forty-one point seven two one, um, says and defines what can be included, and it says, and I'll quote, "The cost of engineering services and all expenses incident to the proceedings for the making and financing of the improvement shall be deemed to be a part of the cost of the improvement." That's very broad language in terms of what can be included. And we have used that language to include all costs necessary, uh, for the setting up and the financing of the improvement itself.
What do you mean by we?
Uh, we, we in terms of advising municipal clients on what can be included.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and one of the things that SIO has, and I think we've had for some time, is a setup fee. Do other townships have setup fees, and is it a, is it this bulk number, like some, like your driver's licenses? Or is it a number that's delineated based on the project, if you know?
Yeah, yeah, so typically, we, we wouldn't, we, we, our law firm in advising our clients have never called it a setup fee, but those fees that we estimate when we start a project are inclusive of an estimate of publication costs, an estimate of legal fees, an estimate of the engineering, right? These are all estimated costs, which then ultimately would have to be confirmed as part of the role.
And, and my final question, and I'm, I don't want to steal the floor, is, you know, when I look at it, I see we can't, the amount advanced by the township shall bear interest at a rate not exceeding five percent per annum, that's in forty-one, seven, thirty-five, eight, but you talked about eight percent, I guess it doesn't matter, because we're not charging up to eight percent anyways, but to the extent that we charge three, four, or five percent, is that just a policy decision by the board on how much to pass along to the residents? And we could charge, we could charge two percent, three percent, whatever we deem is appropriate from a policy perspective?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Two other questions.
Wait, wait, Mark, I think we're taking less orders, let me get back to you.
I'm worried, sorry.
Okay, thank you, so a couple of questions, um, following up on the estimated versus actual costs. Um, I want to know if they keep using the term costs and not fees, Mike? Um, because my understanding of the law is, if we were to charge a fee, such as something that is being called a SIO setup fee, or something that is being called a SIO audit fee, we would need authority under the statute, one, to charge such a fee. Then second, we would have to pass a resolution to set those fees, preferably update them annually, and logically with some methodology justification of what they are, just as we do with our fire prevention fees, planning zoning fees, things like that. And so I just want to confirm with you, Mike, that when you use, that, that we are not authorized to charge fees, but we are authorized to recover costs.
Well, I think that's a form over substance type of argument, and I'll tell you why. The cost that can be included in an improvement is defined by the statute itself. So if I said to you, um, the setup fee is thirty-five hundred dollars, but that is inclusive of publication costs, legal costs, engineering costs, right, that is a cost of the improvement by definition, and I wouldn't get.
If there were a basis.
I wouldn't get, no, not if there's a basis. I mean, I, yes, if you said to me, well, our setup fee is thirty-five hundred, and it includes, um, say it's a road project, and that thirty-five hundred dollars, um, includes, um, a fee for the building department for some unrelated thing, yes, that's not a cost of the improvement. But when you talk about the definition of the cost of the improvement to mean engineering services and all expenses incident to the proceedings for the making and financing of the improvement shall be deemed to be a part of the cost of the improvement, that is your statutory authority to include publication costs, engineering costs, um, legal costs, any cost related to the, the financing and making of the improvement.
So, um, for our policy discussion in a moment here, I emailed out and passed out what actual costs we have, which is far below the setup fee. So in terms of our actual basis, when I say basis, I mean, it needs to be actual costs that we've documented. Could there be other costs that we could scramble around and somehow recreate? You know, probably, but in terms of our actual costs, for example, they range from nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars for Merlin Way, up to a thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars for Daleview. So we can talk about that when we get there.
Is this a question for our attorney?
I'm clarifying, because it's efficient to do that at this point. Um, but I, I want to, I want to be.
I understand, but we're having a back and forth with our attorney, and then we're having public hearings, and then we're getting to the Ashman.
That's fine, so flag this, um, my second question is, so, Mike, under the law, what is the force of any written objections that we've received today? So because we're having this special meeting, we've got a few written objections, and I know in the first public hearing when we were setting the role, those have some force, do the objections we received today have any force in itself?
Uh, not, not legally, I mean, they may affect your opinion on whether or not to, uh, confirm the role. I would, um, I would argue and have, and before the MTT, that making up, particularly in those instances where the actual cost exceeded the estimates, that you have a duty under Act one eighty-eight to then, uh, on a pro rata basis, supply the deficiency by a supplemental assessment, the way in which you're doing. So let's make sure that we have an understanding of what it is that we're doing tonight, because we're only talking about, at least in the two instances, we're only talking about the supplemental increase, not the original as confirmed. And that's why we're here, so, so to go back and revisit these other costs that were attended when it's already been confirmed, my opinion is that those appeals with respect to those costs are waived, they are gone. Nobody appealed it the first time around, what we're talking about now are the supplemental costs, those cost increases, incremental cost increases from the estimate to the actual, and that would be subject to an appeal to the MTT, but nothing else. In those instances that stayed the same, the only thing that we're modifying is the payment terms over time and making sure that the interest rate is included within the resolution. And in the last one, the costs are actually going down.
Certainly, and Mike, just to, um, clarify, the, the, the costs that we confirmed were the total cost confirmed, they weren't in all cases confirming something called, say, an audit fee. It's part of the cost. But it was never, well, I didn't know it was part of the cost.
Always.
It could be.
I mean, it could be, but in, in terms of any, unless you've seen some documentation, I haven't seen any documentation.
What I'm saying, what I'm, what I'm.
You're talking about that X dollar amount.
I'm saying, like, if you went from, let's just use round numbers on a, on a project, if you said, okay, the project cost is twenty thousand dollars, that's estimated, right, and includes all these things, including, oh, this is all of the estimated cost of the improvement, including the setup fee and publication cost, whatever's involved in there, it's twenty thousand dollars. And now you get the actual cost when the project is done, and it's thirty thousand dollars. We're talking about that incremental cost increase as a result of the improvement of ten thousand dollars.
And Mike, the record of what we originally approved, are those resolutions, correct?
Uh, yeah, I mean, to the, yes, to the extent that, uh, that resolution confirmed the special assessment of the original amount, that's correct.
Great, thank you.
Mark, do you have more questions?
Two, two quick questions, uh, so, I have, so just so we don't ever have to revisit this again, is there anything that would prevent us from creating a fairly defined and detailed format and a process? And I, I hear you when you said SAD can vary, but at least for, seems to me, knowing SIO, and we still have a lot of dirt roads left to be had, can we at least sort of, kind of, publish that process for everyone upfront? Uh, and make that more of an official, here's how we assess SADs, at least as it relates to roads?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the process is, um, pretty straightforward once the initial, um, resolution of intent is, is adopted, okay, so there are two things, one is, and I would, I would advise you not to initiate a, um, special assessment district, particularly for a paving project, without petitions signed by at least fifty percent of the record owners in the district. Now, some of my clients actually require more than fifty percent, they'll require sixty-five percent or seventy percent. Why? Because they want unanimous, they want, uh, overwhelming support for that project before it gets started. From there, it's pretty simple, right? Somebody asked about who does the estimated cost for that. The estimated cost, um, on a private road might be, um, with the township's engineer. The township's engineer can provide an estimate or probable estimate of cost related to that paving, and you would take that and use it for that purpose. The homeowners could go out and get a contractor to give them an estimate, particularly on private roads. For public roads, it's typically done by the road commission, the road commission will give you an estimate of cost, because you can't improve a county road without their consent, and generally, they either will do the work themselves, or they will, um, contract it out with a preferred contractor, okay? But beyond those things, the process itself is pretty established under Act one eighty-eight, and it requires at least three and sometimes four resolutions, depending on how the meeting schedule falls. So your first resolution is a resolution of intent, saying we're going to go forward, and we're going to tentatively, uh, declare what the district is and what the improvement is, and sets a public hearing. The public hearing then, the first public hearing, is a public hearing to hear objections to the improvement and the district, okay? Then you, um, and it indicates that those estimates are on file, and people can come look at them, et cetera, with respect to the cost. Then you have another resolutions two and three, which could be done at the same meeting. The net effect of that is, it sets a second public hearing based on this draft role, um, of the special assessment district, and it sets that second public hearing to hear objections on the role then. The objections on the role are the nature of the second public hearing, after which then the township board would adopt the fourth resolution confirming the role and setting the terms for repayment over time. It's, the, the, sorry, just the policy issue that you're talking about is, how is it that you are going to decide whether or not you proceed with a special assessment district? So if you're going to require petitions, then what is the signature requirement? Is that for both public roads and private roads? Um, are you going to bond those projects, are you, is it first come, first served? How are you going to deal with those issues? And yes, you can adopt policies, um, on how you're going to evaluate, uh, those requests, because in some cases, you can be overwhelmed with requests and not be in a position financially to fund it with cash, and then you're borrowing with bonds.
Uh, last question, I thought, uh, Rob, I think it was Pattinson, if I got his name right, um, brought up, I thought, one salient point was, you know, what do other townships do, they, when they assess a road and assign the cost to the, to the folks on that road, do they do an apportion, uh, paradigm, or is it more pro rata?
So, um, it, it's hard to give you statistics, most of them will do pro rata, just because it's easier, right, per parcel. Um, some will, and the statute allows you to do on a, um, per front foot basis, right? So along that road, how many, how many feet do you have along that roadway, that's what you'll take the total project cost, take the total number of feet, now we're doing it still on an apportion basis, based on front footage. Either way, doesn't make a difference necessarily, except that, in all cases, it has to be roughly proportional to the benefit conferred. Now, it's not a dollar-for-dollar analysis, that is, it doesn't have to, for every dollar assessed, it doesn't have to increase your property by one dollar. That has never been the case, um, in Michigan, but it has to be roughly proportional. So we know from case law that if an assessment was two point six times the benefit conferred, the court has said that's disproportionate and then constitutes a taking. On the other hand, we know that one point five times is lawful, because the court has said so. It's that space between one point five and two point six that's still a gray area and a mystery, um, depending on what the, um, what the, uh, assessment is and what the benefit is conferred. So you will never have, like, for instance, um, you will never have in a special assessment district with sixty-three, uh, parcels in the district, you will never, ever, ever have, I've seen, an analysis of a benefit conferred upfront before you confirm that special assessment. Now, we sometimes get a little concerned about whether or not there's a benefit conferred to properties from a public improvement, and we then analyze that, but we're not going to go out and get an appraisal of sixty-three properties, that would be cost prohibitive, and you know where that cost would go? Right to the homeowners who petitioned you to pave the road, because it's a cost of the improvement.
And actually, Mike, that leads to a question that I wanted to clarify, um. We've learned that any cost associated with the SAD must be paid by the SAD. We, we couldn't, for example, step in, as some have suggested, with these cost increases, um, at either Merlin Way or, uh, Westview, um, and Southwood Court, um, the township couldn't step in and say, oh, um, we'll pay this with general fund dollars?
I think that's correct when it comes to private roads, because private roads are a different animal than public roads. So Act one eighty-eight says that you can, um, defray the cost of a public improvement in whole or in part.
We could.
Correct. Yep, you could, you could, let's say you were going to pave a public road, and you said, well, we're going to assess half of it, and the other half will pay out of the general fund. By all means, you can do that under Act one eighty-eight, absolutely. It's the private roads that are problematic, because then it's an improper lending of money, credit, um, for, uh, for a private purpose, and that is prohibited by the Constitution.
I have a question, is what we.
Is what we are doing de novo, or is it supplemental to board action in the past with respect to these four S A Ds?
I believe it's supplemental. It's to cover the incremental cost increase that came in over the estimate thereof, and so those public hearings are required when that cost increase is more than 10%. Now, we didn't bother analyzing it, because we also had to put in there the terms for repayment, and we thought it was just prudent to have a public hearing.
And I don't know if you have the Act 188, 188 in front of you, but 41.732 says, should the assessments in any special assessment role prove insufficient for any reason, dot, 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 the township board shall make additional pro-rata assessments to supply the deficiency. Is that what we're doing here today?
Well, I think it is, because otherwise it's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that what we're purporting to do, or is that what is, we're on the, is that what we're here for today?
Yeah, I, I think, I think it is. Well, there are two provisions. One is you will have a problem, you will have a deficiency if you don't levy a supplemental assessment to cover the actual cost. But there's another provision that talks about the incremental cost increase as well. And that is, I'll find it for you.
I'm sorry, John, are you done?
Yeah, I don't want to be a time hog, run the bill up, so.
No, this is a good use of time.
It's 41, 41.724, subparagraph four. And it says, if a petition is required because property is added to the special assessment district, which makes the original petition insufficient, then blah, blah, blah. And then it says, if the nature of the improvement to be made is such that a periodic redetermination of costs will be necessary without a change in the district boundaries, the township board shall include in its estimate of cost any projected incremental increases. If at any time during the term of the special assessment district, an actual incremental cost increase exceeds the estimate thereof by more than, by 10% or more, notice shall be given as provided in section 4A, a hearing afforded to the record owners of property to be assessed.
Well, my worry is, what happens if it degenerates into this cost is bad, this cost is good, this is too high, this is too low? What is our timeframe that we're on? Is this something we've got to do tonight, based on the December 1st levying? Or is there time to check our math?
Well, I don't, I don't know what math we're talking about, other than the actual incremental cost increase, right? So, so one, you've got decreasing, so I don't think that's a problem. And I don't even think you needed a public hearing on that, but for the fact that we wanted to set the term of the district at 10 years, which had been acknowledged, but I don't think expressly stated. And two, set the interest rate for those payments over that time, right? The other one stayed the same, and so that is the same issue with respect to the term and the interest rate. It's the increasing ones that I'm not sure what math we need to check, other than the fact that if you have estimates for a project, disregard for a minute all of the other costs of improvement, like engineering, et cetera, because my understanding is those didn't change. We're talking about actual construction cost invoices that come in $10,000 higher. Then that's the amount we're talking about levying on that incremental cost increase basis, spread on a pro-rata basis over those same parcels that were in the district.
You mean like concrete and asphalt and?
Correct, yep.
Limestone and grassy.
Whatever, whatever those incremental cost increases were over what the estimates were for the project.
We, we, it just, I think this tags on to that question. In one instance, Mike, we have a project where there was something left out of the scope of work that should have been in it based on the permit that was issued by the Washtenaw County Road Commission. And that is the reconstruction of the shoulders of the road, and because it wasn't included, the contractor did not include that in the bid, it wasn't included in the work. And yet, it must be done. And so the, what we have is a, a quick quote for doing that work. And, but we don't, the work in this instance has not been completed. All of the other work has been completed, we know the costs and all of that, but this particular element, what we have is a, is a, a quote, a bid to do that work. So that, that's a slightly different situation from what you were describing.
Yeah, and in some of those cases, like, you know, we didn't go back, because I, I don't think it'd be cost effective. We knew we were going to hold public hearings on, or we had it. We recommended that you hold public hearings on defining the term and the interest rate anyways. So it was just easier to include all four of them at the same time.
So this, but this instance, what I had assumed, and perhaps I'm wrong, you can tell me, is that if the work were to cost less, just like if any of the costs of any of the S A Ds turned out to be less than what had been in, you know, levied, at the end of that term of the S A D, that difference could be refunded to the property owners, is that correct?
Well, yeah, it could, it could be refunded. It's required to be refunded if it's over 5%.
And not if it's under.
I suppose so. So if it were under 5% of the total cost, then there is legally not required to refund it.
Correct, and, and the refund, depending on the term, because we have some special assessment districts that will last 20 years. And so we get to the end, let's say we've collected more money than we need by more than 5%, then we'll, we'll have to refund the money, but it goes to the record owner of the property at the time the refund is made, not necessarily who paid it.
Sir Flintoff?
So hypothetically, Mike, if we took no action on one or more of these tonight, deferred action until we had more information, the October 12th resolutions would stand, since these are simply supplemental. And we could, in fact, put the October 12th resolutions on the winter tax bill. It would just be without the interest, is that correct?
Well, I guess that raises the question of whether or not you are allowing the payment of the special assessment over time.
Okay, so we would have to establish that tonight, okay? And, and also, this is an illegal question, I'll wait. Okay, I'm done, Will.
All right, are there any other questions for the attorney before we proceed with the public hearings?
I have a question. Can we conduct the public hearing tonight, but potentially adjourn it to the future, so that people who have been here can speak out today, but then we will have satisfied the obligation to conduct a public hearing?
Yeah, the, the only, the only issue is the timing one, and I don't know, and maybe Treasurer Palmer can tell you, when that information has to be conveyed for purposes of tax billing, which are out December 1.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
You've got to get the rule established, get moving.
We're, we're behind, we know we're behind schedule, the, the ordinary schedule already.
But it would be to establish that there's a 10-year payment.
Well, we can get to that when we get to the.
No, but I'm, I'm sorry, one more, one more clarification for Donna or Mike. I just want to be clear, because we want to provide people the 10-year payment option, but what requires us to establish that before it goes on the tax bill?
We have to establish the rule, and it's set up in the process, and it will tell people every year, the principal will be X number of dollars. Gives you also a breakout of the interest, or whatever title you want to call that fee. And so that people that often come in and want to pay it off, we know exactly what is due for them at that point in time. It has to be so we can get it in the record. Because every year, we have to balance those districts. And that's where the audit fee and those charges come in. It's a lot of work to make sure they're correctly done.
And Mike, what is the, is there any statutory requirement we have to have the 10-year term set before the first levy? Since they can be amended at any time?
Yeah, so let me, I'll turn your attention to MCL 41.725. 41.725 talks about approval or determination by the township board and the levy of the special assessment, and it says, if after the hearing provided for in section 4, the township board desires to proceed with the improvement, the township board shall approve or determine by resolution all of the following. A, the completion of the improvement. B, the plans and estimate of costs as originally presented, or as revised, corrected, amended, or changed. C, the sufficiency of the petition for the improvement, if petition is required. After this determination, the sufficiency is not subject to attack, except in a court of competent jurisdiction, within 30 days. The D is the special assessment district, including the term of the special assessment district's existence. I don't know that that was ever done. It may have been discussed, but I didn't see it in any resolution that I.
Yeah, that was never done. It was, I mean, it was never, never done properly.
That's correct. We've always had 10 years for these road assessments.
So I think it's time to proceed with the public hearings. I, 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 if we have further questions, Mike, you're going to hang with us, and we can ask you as we proceed. Thank you. So thank you for the presentation and answering the questions. I'd like to call the first public hearing. This is, we did them in alphabetical order, as we did before. This is the Daleview Drive Special Assessment District. This is, the purpose of this hearing is to allow comment and/or objection to correction to the cost for the special assessment district. The Daleview Drive S A D resolution approved by the board in October 2021 inadvertently omitted language regarding the payment of the special assessment over time. And the board intends to correct this. The rule we have for, the rule of order we have for our public hearings is that each speaker has up to five minutes to make a comment, or to state their case, or raise their objection. Do I have a motion to call the public hearing to order? Moved by Brzeo, support by McLaughlin. All those in favor of calling a public hearing to order, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Public hearing is called to order at 8:02. Is there anyone here present who would like to speak on the Daleview Drive public hearing?
To make sure we have the comments written, especially if someone's objecting, because they have a right then to go to the tribunal, perhaps in the future, so we must make sure. Name and address of residence.
No, we don't. What, what I would ask if the public would be so kind to state for us if you're within or without of the district.
Ready?
Yeah.
Hi, Kathleen Brand, I'm without, I'm not in the district of Daleview. I'm interested in the process. Mr. Homier said that once the S A D was created, the people in the district don't, do not have recourse to the cost of the project, only the incremental, I believe. But it would be my understanding that if the S A D was created contrary to Act 188, then there is legal liability to the township in a civil action. So if these were not conducted properly, the people in the district could band together and ask for correction. So let's not think, there's no remedy here. There is remedy beyond the tax tribunal. Mr. Homier, you can confirm that if you, if you would like. Okay, he's not going to answer my questions. I have a question on who created the scope of work for this S A D district, as a special assessment district? Who created this, the scope of work?
It's a public hearing. You, you speak, and then that's the next speaker, it's not a back and forth.
Well, it has been, Will. I mean, it's typical. When we do public hearings, there's a back and forth. I've attended many of these. And it is a question and answer, but if you would like to deny me that opportunity.
I'm mindful of your five minutes.
And we have not, we have also not enforced the five minutes. Okay, so if you want to make that just on me, Will, that looks.
Everybody equaling.
Well, you don't apply equally. Okay, so let's assume that Washtenaw Engineering created the scope of work. Mr. Homier said that incremental costs can occur, but the engineering cost should not go up. I heard him say that distinctly. But if we look at the printouts we got for payments made, there are incremental costs for Washtenaw Engineering continuously, starting in 2020, 2021, 2022. So how can the engineering cost increase? And then further, if something was left out of the scope of work, I have a purchasing background, I have done scope of work. If I miss something, I can't hold the contractor accountable. But I certainly can hold accountable the party that did the scope of work. So if that's Washtenaw Engineering, and they left out something in the scope of the work, work, scope of work that required whatever Mr. Hathaway said about the boundaries that Washtenaw County requires, then why should the citizens have to pay for that? That should be contractor error in some remuneration. And further, I know Mr. Homier has pointed this out in writing, which came out of the RAC Committee, that there cannot be a separate special, a special assessment district just for engineering costs. He detailed that. So when I look in BSNA, and I look at anybody in Daleview that's subject to this district, they were charged on their winter 2021 bill, $964.95. So it makes me wonder, why was there a separate charge for engineering then? And now you're going to say there's additional engineering. So if I was those citizens, I would certainly challenge that. That doesn't seem to me to be kosher, copacetic, or in line with Act 188. And also, it seems the benefits for any of these S A Ds have never been calculated. So it's not based on frontage, which Mr. Homier said was acceptable. But there's been no calculation of benefit at all. It's just strictly divided by the number of properties. That doesn't seem copacetic with Act 188 either. Thank you.
Are there further speakers?
Gillian Carey, I am not in that district, but I am in the Township Wide Road S A D district. Just like everybody else. Tomorrow, I am on the road advisory committee. It's been a year now, and, and Mark, it's tomorrow night is our meeting. 6:30, it will be by Zoom, and Attorney Homier will be there. We had Joe Turner from Michigan Property Tax Assessment, he's a consultant, he came in and did a presentation. So we're trying to kind of reinvent the wheel regarding the processes and policies of special assessment districts in the township. They have been, there's been a lot of issues for a long time. So Daleview, I have been involved with quite a few of these. I, except for Merlin Way, that is a private road, but I do have questions about that. So one of the things that I have noticed is that the township has been charging engineering costs for special assessments, and some of them, I can think of three off the top of my head, that have not gone forward with the improvement. And in Act 188, and our attorney just verified it, it's part of the improvement. So without it, without the improvement, that engineering is, cannot be a special assessment. Again, what he said was, it, the special benefit that a special assessment provides is an increase in value. Now, a homeowner can have an appraisal from before and after, and then they could use that in the tax tribunal. So with that said, we're trying to get all of this situated and figured out. The special assessment book, I believe that is on your desk right there. We do have it at the township. We do have it at the township. I just, thank you, Will Hathaway and Clerk Jessica, for pulling that for me, and it laid out everything very clearly, and I'm like, why are we trying to figure out these policies when it's right here and it's been in the office? So I think I'm pretty excited about that. So tonight, this is just to, for the improvements, of course Wagner Ridge Court doesn't have, or extra costs or whatnot, but it's hard for me to believe that in the original public hearing, only thirty days after that, when the roll was called, that's all those residents get, because here we are with more costs, and especially with Westview Way that has, I drove that, I went to see the fire, the house that was in the fire, and I noticed that the edges of the pavement were real steep, and I'm like, that's not right. But, you know, we could just keep going on and on and adding more money to this, and which could, in fact, increase the cost by two point six or the, over the benefit. So it seems to me that they would still have recourse. Okay, so that's part of what I had to say. The other part is, each of these, except for the private road, has a SIO payment. Okay, so in the Townshipwide Road SAD, every parcel has paid eighty-five dollars per year for ten years, and that is only for, to maintain connector roads. I do not live on a connector road. Most people do not live on a connector road. My parcel, and again, a special assessment, must increase the benefit to, that's the definition of special assessment. So in the previous policies, it said, if you, the first three special assessments of the year, they get ten thousand, twelve thousand, or whatever. Well, that's money coming from that Townshipwide Road SAD that I am paying it to. My road hasn't been improved. A lot of roads haven't been improved, and then we're giving a benefit to more residents, and I'm not, there's nothing, it's not their fault, but it's just another thing that is not proper. So we really need to get these things straightened out. Tonight, running around today, I was looking at Park Ridge SAD, so I was in the township for quite a while, but this all feels rushed. In the packet, there's missing information. So residents that have big bills for the next ten years at least, are going to, they don't have all the information. We don't have all the information. The first-class mailing should be in here. It's not. They have received it, but it should be in the resolution for historical purposes. Okay, a lot of the issues with the township is, we're lacking staff. SADs, pathways, other types of things. We really need a project manager. We need a financial director for them to know or to figure out what the cost and whatnot, and work with the project manager to make sure things are done properly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak during the hearing on the Daleview Drive SAD?
Fund raised by Rob Pattinson. Rob Pattinson, SIO Township. I wish the board had had a chance to watch Joe Turner's presentation to the Roads Advisory Committee about six weeks or two months ago now. Perhaps if you had had more advanced warning of this meeting, you would have had time to review that presentation. Joe Turner was an expert on SADs and gave some very thorough advice. Part of that advice was the polar opposite to what Attorney Homier just gave about that it's okay to split the cost equally among the parcels and disregard the direct benefit. The key words here are the direct benefit per each parcel, and I don't know how you resolve that. You have two bits of polar opposite advice. In the last several months, you have heard several times from several of these different SAD areas that the jobs are incomplete, and my question for all of you is, how does that affect what you do tonight? Are you paying these contractors when they haven't completed the job? And then, lastly, this township has a history of mistakes on SADs. If you don't act tonight, then the levy is postponed for a year to next December. It seems rational to take the time to do it right and avoid more lawsuits. It's not until tomorrow will we have the more involved advice from Attorney Homier to the Roads Advisory Committee that is working out how to do these SADs properly. If you go forward tonight and make another mistake, as had been made before, then you leave the township wide open to lawsuits. Why would you do that when you don't have a road SAD policy and procedure in place? You've got a lot of work to do tonight. Thanks for your time.
Any other comments? I have Jonathan.
Hi, this is Jonathan Greenberg, Phillips, 6250 Park Road. So if, what Rob is telling me, I have no, telling us, and I have no reason to doubt his information, why are we paying this attorney two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour to sit here and speak with disdain to some of the members of our board? I mean, the tone he uses when addressing women versus men is pretty sharply noted here. I also think that we have an attorney, we have our own attorney, and this bad advice aligned with what the supervisor wants, not what necessarily is the law, this is what we're getting for two seventy-five an hour, again, you know, after tonight, a hundred thousand dollars. Does that just sink in? What was all the opposition to helping our firefighters, oxuses, so much money being And so much of it unnecessary. A hundred thousand dollars spent on an attorney when we have our own. Totally unnecessary, and we're even getting bad advice from him. The advice the supervisor wants to share. Sad, folks, it's really sad.
I believe he's still speaking. I have no other comments. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on the Daleview Drive SAD?
So I'm open.
Moved by Ryser, support by Brzezow. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing is closed at eight seventeen. I'll bring us to the next public hearing. This is the Merlin Way Special Assessment District. Purpose of this hearing is to allow comment on and/or objection to or correction to the cost for the special assessment district. The Merlin Way SAD Resolution approved by the board in October 2021 inadvertently omitted language regarding the payment of the special assessment over time. Also, the total cost for the project increased by ten thousand eight hundred dollars due to the requirements that the Washtenaw County Road Commission placed on the project during the permanent process. Like the other public hearing, each speaker will have five, up to five minutes to make their objection or to make their point regarding the Merlin Way cost increase. Is there a motion to call this public hearing to order? Moved by Ryser, support by Brzezow. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The hearing is called to order at eight eighteen.
I am a member of the district, Merlin Way District, which is going to be assessed tonight, almost a quarter of a million dollars. So this is kind of important to talk about. And Mr. Supervisor, I don't care what you personally think, the previous board, in eleven years, our public hearings were open discussions to answer questions and didn't limit people to five minutes, and the people who came to public hearings expected to get answers. And you restricting the dialogue is your own personal decision, it's not a board decision, and I think it's wrong. So don't tie me, Patrick, I'm talking. It's a quarter of a million thing, I will be done when I'm done. First of all, Mr. Homier made a misstatement. The first payment on, or at least on Merlin Way's SAD, was last winter. We got inappropriately assessed for a twelve thousand, three hundred dollar engineering fee, which Mr. Homier has said is improper. In fact, I think he said it's illegal, but we did it anyway. And on October twenty-second, I sent the board, all of you, not you, John, you weren't on the board yet, some questions which have yet to be answered. These questions were about Merlin Way's SAD's costs, and I have to say, I'm disappointed, but not surprised, that these questions have gone unanswered. First question was, what is the justification for the five percent interest fee when the general funds investments only generate two percent? I went through the financial reports that are on the website, there's only fifteen or twenty of them, and added up all the interest fees, divided it by the number of months that it was, and the average was, I think, either one point eight nine or one point nine eight, something like that. It was less than two percent. But I'm not a communist, I'll let you make a little profit, make it two percent. Why five? Where is the extra three percent going? What is that covering? Mrs. Treasurer? What?
I wanted to answer your question. I have found no justification for the five percent. I brought some information, we'll be discussing it. I find justification for three percent.
Is that a bad piece of paper, that was three percent? Okay. What is the justification for the thirty-two hundred and fifty dollars?
What's that? The SIO setup fee or? I have found no justification for the SIO setup fee, I've asked for it.
I think that's our resolve, I think we can't go backwards on that. So I just--
Oh, no, we can--
This isn't the time for the deliberation.
Sorry.
Yes, it is! That's what this is for!
David, I didn't make up the rule on my own. The rule of orders, the rule of order is five minutes per speaker during public--
Well, I'm getting my answers, my questions answered.
We are hearing your questions, and we will deliberate on them when we get to that point in the agenda, but it's not a time--
David, what do you say, but we will get to your answers. Since I wrote that email nine days ago, which has not been answered, I realized I left out the request for the details of ASI's increase of ten thousand eight hundred dollars to the Merlin Way SAD. The reason why this is important, when ASI, paving company, started the project on Merlin Way, they sent a brand-new employee to make driveway cuts on all the paved driveways. This is done to facilitate connecting the driveway, the paved driveway, to the newly paved road, because there's always going to be a little bit of incline. So what they do is they make a cut about ten feet in, they remove the asphalt that's there, and then when they pave the road, they repave it all. What they didn't do is tell him to make cuts on only asphalt driveways, and he started making cuts on my concrete driveway. I stopped him before he finished, but not before he had made one complete cut and then started a second. ASI did have a concrete company come out, called Medina Resources Group, and they did repave the first ten feet or so of my concrete drive. This was done at no cost to me or the neighborhood, at least that's what I was told. We don't have any detail on this ten thousand eight hundred dollars increase, it's just a change order on the bills. What I'm concerned about is that cost of that concrete buried in that ten thousand dollars. I think ASI and the board owes us an explanation of what is in that change order. If it was a change order for a five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, I don't, but this is ten thousand dollars. Ten thousand eight hundred dollars. So I think you owe us the explanation, the detail of that ten thousand dollars, and I expect to get it tonight. I mean, this is a public hearing, this is where this money's going to be set to be billed to us. These questions have to be answered tonight, or another public hearing when you do set the roll. But what the township desperately needs is, as Mr. Turner said over and over and over again, if you've listened to this expedition, is an SAD literate attorney, someone who knows the ins and outs of SADs, and whether you can or cannot bill engineering separately or not. You did, it's wrong. Whether you not charge the administration fee on the SAD, you did, it's wrong. So I mean, there are all sorts of things that this township does not know about SADs, and we're groping in the dark, and we need somebody who is literate in SADs to advise this township. And, oh, by the way, put me down, I'm going to protest, if this is passed tonight, I'm going to appeal to the tax--
Anyone else who would like to speak to the Merlin Way public hearing?
And if I may, David, for the record, your address is--
Seven one three Merlin Way.
Thank you.
Jean Hergat, six eight five Merlin Way. And for the record, I'm going to appeal if this gets passed, so I do not agree with the five percent increase. That seems arbitrary. It's not eight percent, but it should be two, or you might agree with the three percent. But I don't understand why you chose five percent, what's the feeling behind that? And I agree, we started this SAD years ago, and it got pushed back, pushed back, pushed back. Last November, we were supposed to get started, and because of problems that the board had, it got delayed till this spring, and I think that shot these prices up, because we argued about it, it's going to keep going up and up and up, and they said, oh, no, the price is set, it won't go up, and here it's gone up. And I think that these, you know, in today's world, this month, you can't get concrete. So I know all year, concrete prices have been going up and up and up, and had we had this road paved a year ago, I know it's not concrete, but I know lots of prices are going up, I'm sure asphalt went up, so I argue about the increase. I think the board failed us a year ago, and I'm suspicious of all the things going on, that we don't have a good financial record, we don't have someone that's a financial person on the board that's paid to audit everything, and I think we need an audit. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to--
Who's going to appeal?
Yes, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the Merlin Way SAD?
Rick Naylor, seven thirty-two Merlin Way. I'm going to appeal as well. I don't agree with the five percent or the breakdown of ten thousand, we'd like to see that.
Is there anyone else?
I have Rob Pattinson on line, would you like to speak?
Rob Pattinson, outside of the SAD area, just like Daleview, Merlin Way has problems with an unfinished project. There are repairs that need to be made, there are aspects of the project that were incomplete, and that too needs to be addressed.
Your motion is due--
And Jonathan?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, this is Jonathan. Just wanted to remind everybody that we've paid unnecessarily for, what, about eight, nine months now, a hundred thousand dollars to an attorney who doesn't even know what he's talking about. We had a presentation here, at the township hall, that clearly outlined the law around SADs. The fact that this attorney is giving advice that is contrary to the law, and we're paying him two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, is almost as egregious as the thirty-year cozy relationship that this township has had with Carlisle Wharton. When are these games going to stop? When are you going to be accountable and transparent to your constituents? That's all I have for now. It's a hundred thousand dollars, though. A hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to adjourn the public hearing on Merlin Way. Moved by McLaughlin, support by Ryser. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing is closed at eight twenty-nine. That brings us to the public hearing on the Wagner Ridge Court Special Assessment District. In this instance, the purpose of the hearing is to allow comment on and/or objection to or correction to the cost for the special assessment district. The Wagner Ridge Court SAD Resolution approved by the board in October 2021-- The Wagner Ridge Court SAD resolution approved by the board in October 2021 inadvertently omitted language regarding the payment of the special assessment over time. Also, the October 2021 resolution was based on a total project cost of $121,040. This cost turned out to be too high. There are five minutes allotted to each speaker, up to five minutes. Is there a motion to call the public hearing to order? Moved by Palmer, support by Riser. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The hearing is called to order at 3:30. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on the Wagner Ridge Court Special Assessment District?
I would. Good evening. My name is Dan McKenzie. I live at 3736 Wagner Ridge Court. And I'm going to tell you probably a better story than you've been hearing about SADs so far this evening. So the genesis for ours was back in May of 2021. I got the SIO newsletter and Will Hathaway wrote an excellent article on SADs. Prior to that, I was trying to figure out, how do we fix this broken road? 35 years old, potholes, crumbling. The professionals call it alligatoring. It was just a freaking mess. And so I sent an email to Will in midday and I got a response at eight o'clock that evening with an email introduction to another person by the name of Lou Kidder. So the purpose that I came here this evening initially was just to publicly acknowledge some people who were really instrumental in helping us bring that project in well below budget. Satisfactory. I think everybody's very happy. I think it might be, there's a little discontent. We can speak to that. So I want to just publicly, first of all, thank Will. He's been a great partner. I know there's a lot of what I perceive as interneese in fighting here at the township for whatever reason. But I can tell you without equivocation, in all my years in business, my experience with Will was extraordinary. Returns phone calls quickly, texts there every moment to help me out. Lou Kidder, those who have been around for a while know Lou was very instrumental in helping people with SADs. I said to Lou, you should be making a hundred grand a year for what you're doing. Because he met with me and two of my neighbors. I had two of the neighbors who started this process with me. Because I'm one of the other eyes and other brains to figure out what direction we're going to do. And after the first, he gave me the overview, gave me documentation on how we approached this. And pretty much I was off to the races. So Lou Kidder was, he was a mentor on the front end and he was invaluable. At a certain point, I didn't need him anymore, honestly. So I just took it over. I was engaged with multiple entities, Cadillac Asphalt, Dome Concrete, SIO Township, Washington County Road Commission, and on a lesser level, Washington Engineering. And within those entities, dealing with multiple people. And so it was, it wasn't a huge project, but you know, there were a lot of moving parts. And I had well over 300 hours into this project. Anybody who knows me knows my OCD gene is not recessive. I'm going to dot the i, cross the d twice if I have to. I had two principles and I told my neighbors every step of the way. I would measure twice, cut once, use the carpenter's rule, and I would have complete transparency. So after I got the newsletter, after I got some information, I went around door to door, met with all my neighbors, explained what I wanted to do. We got 100% approval from all the neighbors. Everybody totally bought in. And again, so I'm off to the races. Fortunately, I worked with Cadillac Asphalt. And I'm not, it's not a paid advertisement, but they were fantastic. Wanda Dwyer was the cost estimate I worked with. And we had at least a half dozen onsite meetings. At least 10 iterations of different options to choose what the, how to deal with our road. And I can talk about that a little bit. And so she was just, her patience was enormous. And then Kyle Toedoff, who was really the guy who managed it, once the paving started, he managed it. But again, I probably had a half dozen meeting with Kyle. Because there's more than one way to pave a road. The first option we considered was doing what's called pulverizing. They come in with a big machine, they pulverize all the existing concrete or asphalt, use that as a base. And then it gives you a stronger base. In the process, I learned what one gentleman referenced, what has to happen is they got to cut all the driveways back. On our road, there's a half a dozen concrete driveways and the rest are asphalt. So right away, there's a concern, well, wait a minute, I don't want to pay for somebody's concrete. So I went back and recalibrated, looked at other options. The other option is milling. They committed to scrape everything off and use the existing base. But we weren't sure if that was going to be satisfactory. So I brought somebody from Cadillac in. We did pourings where we did a half a dozen or more to look at the substrate to make that sure it was satisfactory. So again, Cadillac was there trying to figure things out. And multiple people look at those results. They said, you're good. You're good to go. So it was a really good process. So I, again, the initial reason to come here was to thank people for their support in this project. I've heard some stories here and I thought we didn't have any of that. I chased down every single penny on this project. I've got all the numbers right here and I'm not going to stop because I'm going to keep talking. So you might as well turn it off. So yeah, that's the story. You know, it's a beautiful road and we're happy. Now, there was, I know one resident reached out to me at the end of August and said, hey, Dan, tell me about this curb. I'm at the end of the court. Tell me about this curb at the end of the court and your new driveway. And said, well, the curb at the end of the court was in the project from day one, as were the curbs at the entrance. And the purpose, there were three main goals with this project. One, replace the 35-year-old deteriorating road. Two, put curbs at the entrance because everyone was cutting it short. All the residents, all the mailman, garbage man, going off the road, creating ruts, breaking off the asphalt, throwing dirt and gravel onto the road. And coming out of our court, it's dangerous because you've got a hill coming down from the south. You've got a hill coming down from the north. We're kind of in a little valley there, so spinning out on ground. So that was one. The second was at the end of the court, the house at the end of the court, which happens to be mine and a few others, is a downward grade. So all the water is running down. The same purpose, garbage man, mailman, people driving off the asphalt, creating a rut, water is pooling. 365 said whenever you had heavy rain and if you had the winter time, you had ice. So I explained to that resident, this was in the project from day one. Now, the one issue, there was one driveway that had to be cut back and that was my driveway. I, in 14 months of working this project, the first I heard of this was the final meeting I had with Cadillac and Dome Concrete several days before the paving was to commence. And I was, I was very surprised. Because when I have a dozen meetings with both entities over the course of 14 months, you'd think that I would have heard that. But the project manager for Dome, he's the expert. He said it had to happen. He said it was going to cost $1,500. So my wife and I decided that if that cost was going to be borne, we were going to pay it. Because I didn't think it was fair to the neighbors and we didn't want any sense that there's somehow a conflict of interest or we're doing something for ourselves. So eight feet and two inches was cut off of my 155-foot driveway. Cadillac billed SIO Township for the full amount. What I contracted, what I agreed with them and what they stuck to the original price with me, they were fantastic. And they had put the $1,500 in there. And I think it might have been you, Donna, who someone caught, well, wait a minute, there's a contract for X and you've got X plus Y. So SIO Township pushed back on that and Cadillac agreed to wait. So there's no cost. Okay? This afternoon at 3:30 or 1:30, I get an email in my inbox that talks about the fact that because I had my driveway improved, I have some incremental value over the neighborhood and we should talk about how the assessment is going to be spread.
This email was for me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So and if the board has copied, if you didn't read it, I've got a response I'm going to read for the record. Because it's not a monetary issue. After 14 months and well over $300 of working on a project, to hear something so picky you is just, it's maddening.
Because, you know, I've looked at your whole situation.
It's maddening.
Your driveway was not approved. It was just replaced.
It was eight feet, two inches. So, you know, I sent an email, the board has it. I'm not going to bother reading it because I think I've spoken long enough on this issue. As you can tell, I'm a little hot about it. Because I did everything possible to make this the very best project for our street. I brought the project in well below budget. And yet I get that email. So what I decide, here's the bottom line, here's my last paragraph to the McLaughlin clerk. While I strongly disagree with your suggestion that the assessment should be spread differently than 1/15 to each homeowner, especially in light of the fact that no one actually was charged for the work on the driveway. If you choose to press this issue, I suggest we put it to a vote with the neighborhood. Majority rules. This is what we did. And every single decision that we had in our neighborhood, we had a couple of meetings at my home as well as voluminous emails back and forth to all my neighbors. If we had a decision to make the mix of concrete, if we wanted to do milling versus pulverizing, we chose majority rules. So if the board here says, yeah, the McKenzie residence got some differential value, he needs to pay more, fine, but I think you do, you do what you think is right. I think it's wrong. And I think if you want to, put it to the neighborhood vote and I'll look by that. Thanks for your patience.
Thanks, Dan.
Hi, Kathleen Brad again. I have some questions about the accounting on this project. I'm not within this district. Can somebody, Mr. Hathaway passed around a document. Of course, I'm going to say this is a problem because people on Zoom are not getting these documents, Will. That's a problem.
It's added to the packet.
What is the figure SIO payment, negative $10,000 on this project? What is that for?
About this one, maybe, to the deliberation.
Well, as Mr. Reed said, you should be answering questions. So that looks like some kind of benefit to this SAD. Why are they getting SIO payment of $10,000? Anybody know?
Daleview?
No, and Daleview.
Wagner and West Uway, that's the $10,000 from the township-wide SAD that the township contributes to those. It's not on Merlin because it's a private road.
Right. Okay, so of course, that particular township payment is not applied equally to all SADs. I don't know how it's determined. This one gets $10,000, this one gets nothing. That's a problem. So I'll point that out. Also, the numbers on here do not match the GL activity report that was printed today. This shows Cadillac On this report, it says $113.860. That's a significant difference. So I would trust the general ledger as these are actual payments coming. These are actual payments to Cadillac. I would not trust this document that was added to me. Right?
You did, the document that Will created today, I think, Will, you're talking about the projected costs, correct?
So I will answer this because otherwise it's just going to get confusing. If you look in the packet, you'll find, in the meeting packet, you'll find a credit invoice from Cadillac. They determined that they had charged too much. And so they credited back to the township. And the number that you see in this summary reflects that credit, which we will collect from Cadillac. And so this is the cost that will be the final cost from Cadillac.
When was that inserted in the packet? Because when I looked at it, it was not there.
The credit came in late on Friday and was added to the packet, I believe, on Sunday. Am I correct when the roll was corrected for?
I pulled it down yesterday.
Yeah, so it's been in the packet since sometime on Sunday afternoon. And the information on the summary sheet was added to the packet today. So that, those cost figures are in the meeting packet for those who are at home and would like to look at it.
And Will, when I talked to Cadillac Thursday, I know this wasn't in place. So what happened Friday and Saturday that caused them to give us $5,300 today?
Well, it didn't happen on Friday. I think they were, they were, they were looking at what they had agreed to in terms of the calculation of the cost. I don't know all of the details about their internal discussions, but they determined that because they can use less material, that they would give the sort of the cost savings back to the township and by extension, back to the property owners in the SAD.
When was the project finished?
Rather than just keep it, keep that different.
When was the project finished?
Paving of Wagner Ridge Court occurred in the spring.
So Cadillac is just now giving a discount?
I can speak to that.
Well, I didn't ask you. Shouldn't.
Do you want to hear an answer?
No, I don't want to hear from you.
Well, I know the answer.
Oh, and maybe when we get to deliberation, Will.
Right.
All right.
Okay, the same for Washington Engineering. This document says that we paid them $1,700. This document says $1,200 plus the fact that this document was not available as early as this morning. Clerk Flintoff asked for documentation and Mr. Hathaway, you did not provide it. So I don't know if this is in the packet or not. But we clearly know it wasn't there by Sunday. So how can these numbers that you have come up with, when, I don't know. But this evening, you have a document.
Are you part of this SAD? I mean, I'm just curious.
Dan, you're out of order.
This is a public hearing.
Well, I wanted to answer your question.
Dan, you're out of order.
Dan, it's okay.
Public hearing. I'm a concerned citizen about how the township operates.
I appreciate that.
I'm very concerned about financial affairs.
Yeah, please press your comments to the board.
So why are these things different? Jessica's printed this off today. Will came up with his numbers today and they don't match.
What I provided was the actual expenditures.
And again, I trust, I trust these. And the permit for Washington County says $226.25. We paid $500. And when I say we, this does come from taxpayer money as a loan. But I don't understand why one number is different and it looks as if, well firstly, you have a benefit of $10,000 and not everybody gets. And then it looks like there was some things returned that look awkward. I'm sure the other districts would be curious about that fact also.
Anyone else who would like to speak during this public hearing? Well, Dan, you've already spoken.
I can answer the questions you had about that credit.
Well, why don't we hold off until we get to deliberation? I'm sure some of these questions that people are raising in the public hearings will be dealt with when the board is deliberating.
Okay, we call for a break at 8:00.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the public hearing on Wagner Ridge Court?
I do have a Jonathan who would like to speak.
Hey, so, thank you. Dan. Okay, so for those of you following at home, Will has a long history of getting a pal a head to show up at these meetings and give like testimony to how awesome all these contractors, Will and other people are. It's, if it's not Marty Mayo and somebody else, there's a whole host of people he's used in the pack for this purpose. So this guy is just one more of them in a long line of, of attempts to sway public opinion. What's really going on here is, you know, someone was asked by Will to come in and get his back because he's got his. You know, here's the other observation I'd like to share. You let him speak for well over the five minutes and he really didn't have anything more to say. He was just rambling on. Then he interrupted Ken. This is no different than the Lou Kidder debacle where Will, you brought him in and gave him author. author, contribute a million dollars to a SAD that you were pushing at the time. I was there, I heard it. I was the one who said, what? Isn't that our money? Luke Kitter is a loose cannon and has been a problem in the township. He's on a religious mission. So don't take any advice from folks who are saying Will and Lou are the guys who are helping about. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak during the public hearing on Wagner Ridge?
Oh, yeah.
I have a Pam Boyd.
Pam Boyd.
Thank you. Pam Boyd, a SIO resident. To the new members of our board, you can see that some residents are a little upset. I did a little bit of research on some back and forth during public, during a public hearing. And I, I would agree that David Reed has a good history and previous boards, I'm sure, allowed for back and forth. There usually wasn't as much anger that's built up with some on this board. I would like to comment that Eagle specifically says that the hearing does not allow for discussion. However, before the start of a formal, formal time, Eagle staff will normally host an informational session. You are encouraged to ask questions during the informational session. I think that it would go a long way for this board to look at how they could do things differently to interact with residents and not get residents angry at them. You continue to disappoint me. Thank you.
Is there a motion to call the public hearing on Wagner Ridge Court closed? Moved by Brazil, support by Rizer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Public hearing is closed at 8:52. It's been suggested that we have a brief recess and then we would move on to the final public hearing, if that's okay.
Could I have one request? While we're on recess, could whoever has the detail on the change order, grab it for our discussion when we get back? I think that's the one piece of info we don't have.
Well, when, when we've completed the public hearings, then we'll move on to the deliberation and I intend to ask Joe Maynard, who has some information as the engineer who worked on some of these.
Is there anything written, Joe?
I was looking for it on the email, but it didn't have it.
Yeah, so Joe or Will, anything written, the breakdown of the 10A would be great.
Okay, so we're taking a five-minute recess? Okay, so we'll come back at 9 o'clock or thereabouts.
Thank you.
Welcome to the talk.
We're recording stuff.
It's just.
You just handed it in.
Oh, that was just my hand. Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Contract mission contract with Cadillac. They honor, we signed that last year. And they honored it to this year because we could get to it.
Oh, that was good.
Great.
Did you, were there bids? So I, I was from your.
Where, where was it?
No. You did? Okay, so the top share. I know, but next one, I want to. I never.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can I take a picture of it?
This is pretty, I was, you know, I apologize if.
She said she saw it here.
Washtenaw Engineering.
I did, I did take a picture. I took a picture of it.
This is one of the wider here. She was a representative, she's a cost. She was from Cadillac. She always intended to be the spirit of it to be a, not to make scene. She told me time and time again, don't worry, Dan, we're not going to see because I'm very focused on making sure that I get to tell my neighbors.
Yeah.
And then they ended up using less asphalt. We had a contract for 800 tons and they used 746. That's, is it their representation?
How many persons? And how long is your?
One job.
Okay.
So these are just the, I saw the book. This is my portion of, of here. Inspection fees for Washtenaw. I got a refund from them because they didn't use it all. Washtenaw Engineering. All across my side. Finger right there. They're also so rich. They had more formal stuff that I just.
So you said that your, your court was already paid.
Calling the meeting.
Recording in progress.
Next, next item is the public hearing on Westview Way, Southwood Court Special Assessment District. The purpose of this hearing is to allow comment on and/or objection to corrections to the special assessment district cost. The Westview Way Southwood Court SAD resolution approved by the board in October 2021 inadvertently omitted language regarding the payment of the special assessment over time. The amount of the total project cost was also set too low by approximately $3,000. More recently, another issue emerged. The scope of work did not include reconstruction of the road shoulders after the repaving. The Washtenaw County Road Commission permit requires reconstruction of the road shoulders. The additional work to place soil and hydro seed the right of way as needed along Westview and Southwood is projected to cost up to $14,400. The total project cost increase will result in a per parcel increase of approximately 1,023. The board intends to correct these items. Five minutes per speaker during the public hearing. Is there a motion to call a public hearing to order? Moved by Palmer, support by Brazil. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is called to order at 9:04. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on the matter of the Westview Way, Southwood Court Special Assessment District Costs? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the vote?
Hope's, I'm sorry, somebody just popped up. Rob Pounds.
Apologize for all of the comments tonight. Lastly, do we know if any of these SADS tonight were put out to bid for both the engineering and the paving? And if they weren't put out to bid, I believe these trustees deserve an answer why. Thank you.
I have a Jonathan.
Jonathan?
Yeah, sorry. No, I had a little trouble there getting off mute. Yeah, so I was also going to ask, it seems like we have a lot of contracts with Cadillac paving and yet there's no real record of any kind of bid process that goes on. So what, what's up with that? And also getting back to the, you know, during the break, I was thinking about the comments that, that other individual made while Kathy was trying to speak. And he inadvertently questioned her ability to make comment, interrupted her while she was making comments, questioned her ability to make comments by asking the question, are you even in the district or are you in the district? I don't know his exact words. But the intent of that comment was to question her right to speak and he interrupted her to do that. That is the kind of sycophant that Mr. Hathaway has come to these organizational, come to these meetings and, you know, spread that kind of wonderlust for Mr. Hathaway and his corrupt group. I'm tired of it. Thank you.
I have Jan Warner.
Is there Jan Warner?
This, oh, mister.
Yes. Yes. Jan Warner, 1239 Westview Way. The, the big problem I have with this SAD is the pricing is now coming in over 20% higher than we were originally told. And I would think that the group that, that does the engineering, does the estimates and all this are not new to the game and should know that there were requirements for the shoulders of the road to be bolstered. And that was quite significant cost increase of $17,400. That's an awful lot of money along with the, the underestimation of the initial cost associated with the product, project. So I'm not sure exactly how this will be, it will be looked at or, you know, if there's any further ratification on it. But I'm, I'm not too, too pleased about that additional cost. That is not what I signed the petition on. And this is added, you know, it's almost like an ad hoc thing. So I'm not sure if this is something that can be distributed to some other account, but I, you know, I for one, and I don't know if I'm the only one on the street who stayed for this, this hearing, but I am absolutely mortified with, with 20% plus increase in cost. If I did that at my job, I'd be looking for another job. That's all I have.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
I have a public comment.
Please, I see you.
Yes, so regarding the Westview Way, there was no engineer, engineering study. It was just, I'm not really sure. I think if I read, there was Luke Kitter had something to do with it and they went ahead and did the improvements. And I do remember back in the public hearings that residents did have questions. They were very concerned. That area has already through the Washtenaw County Drain Commission has a large special assessment for flooding and they're looking at another one. And then Bryce Kelly had mentioned to, this is our previous manager for people that don't know, but he had said something that when the Liberty Road water went through, that those people would be forced to hook up to water, which is very expensive. So there was a lot of questions and some really freaked out residents that have small children. And they were treated with disrespect. So this is the problem with, why, a lot of the problem or one of the problems with these special assessments and not having policies and procedures. But when it comes to bidding, I believe in our policies and procurement policy, I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong. It states in there, anything over 20,000 must go for bid. So this needs to be implemented with special assessments as well. There's nothing, this is nothing different than any other bid that we would go for. You know, and, and listening to the objections and whatnot, and I'm glad that Wagner Ridge Court, that worked out great, but they had somebody that was looking over everything from a resident's point. But they had somebody that was looking over everything from a resident's point of view. But if we went to a company and said, listen, um, I want this done and they just did it haphazardly without any pro, process or procedures. Would we go into business? Would we take their business? You know, I don't think so. I wouldn't. So this is where we need to look at, you know, if a resident any, went to any business, would they be accepting this project and, and paying for it? I don't think so. I really believe that the township needs to slow down on special assessments, get their act together, get a project manager and go for bids, follow our own policies and procedures. Thank you.
Thank you. In that case, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the Westview Way, Southwood Court, Special Assessment District costs? Moved by Brzeo, support by McLaughlin. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, public hearing is closed at nine eleven. That brings us to the unfinished business portion of our agenda, which is where we will deliberate on each of these SADs in turn. And what we are considering is the resolutions that have been prepared to correct the omission of the information about the payment over time option for these SADs. And in some cases, we have other corrections, but in the case of Daleview, that is the only correction that we are making. Is there discussion? Clerk Flintoff?
So there's two issues on this. And I'm glad we're starting with Daleview, which is a little more simple. Two issues on Daleview that go across all four of these. You can, can share out the Excel sheet, please. First of all, on Daleview, there was something called a SIO setup fee. It was our estimated administrative costs. Our actual administrative costs were actually 1,541. So that's actually, I would recommend reducing it by $1,709. Now, I don't think for that small amount, we need to change the language of the resolution to do that. But I would ask that the board, because we're not required by law to do refunds under 5%, I would ask that we, I would make a motion that tonight, that we agree that we will refund Daleview residents $1,709 because our actual administrative costs were lower than what we estimated here.
I, I.
Poor order.
Please.
You can't do any refunds on an SAD until the SAD is completed. And you can check legally.
Okay, I'd like to just discuss that idea though. I, and, and, and maybe it's helpful. There are things that historically here have been called SIO setup fees or SIO audit fees, which were really just estimations of what our administrative costs might be. So I went through and scoured since 2019 to date, our actual costs that we've actually logged for these. And for Daleview, you know, the advertising cost, $1,383. Um, the cost allocation, it's currently 56, but we, we'll be bringing a budget amendment to have it be 158. And I'll explain what that is, but the 1,383 plus 158 is $1,541. What is the cost allocation? The cost allocation covers the share of the audit fee, the share of the finance director, the share of all of that. So when I looked through, there wasn't, you know, an attorney fee or stamps or postage or printing, anything big or small that had been coded to Daleview. That's, that's everything I could find was 1,541. We'd estimated it at 3,250 and since our cost came in below the estimate, though I won't make a motion now, would ask for my colleagues' opinions on agreeing tonight to refund that 1,709.
Why we wouldn't? Well, I, I, I take issue with this calculation of the expenses. I don't, I don't agree. You know, I, obviously I trust Clerk Flintoff that you did scour through and look for evidence of costs. But my understanding of the costs associated with the SADs is much higher than what you have given and just, you know, I understand that that's what we have a record of.
That's what we have documented and.
Right. What is, you're saying there's probably soft costs as well?
Yes, there's all sorts of costs and, and, but I, I, I do want to address this, this question of the setup fee because I didn't invent the setup fee. The setup fee is a, a something that the township has used. Someone came up with it many years ago. I'm guessing it undercounts what the actual costs are that the township incurs with administering each SAD. But because I wasn't even really tracking on it back when we first inherited these SADs from the prior, you know, administration, I didn't even see that we needed to add it to two of the SADs, which is why we only have the setup fee on Daleview and Merlin Way and not on the other two. So that's an explanation for that disparity, but I didn't create it. I don't know how it was calculated. Uh, but at some point, people sat down, probably our finance director was involved and calculated what the setup fee would include or what it would be based on. And that has been used by SIO Township, just like the 5% has been used by SIO Township as the norm for SADs. So when we inherited these SADs, those two elements were included, at least in the case of Merlin and Daleview. Now, uh, we had a different situation with the other two SADs and we'll get to them in just a minute. But to sort of go in and, and sort of, you know, do a quick look and say, well, this is all that I can find evidence of, and therefore that is the cost of the SADs and we should take action based on that. I don't, I don't agree with that.
So, so let me say something. I'm, I'm a big proponent of recovering our indirect costs. I've been criticized for how much I want to recover our indirect soft costs from the Parks Village, from the Open Space Fund. In fact, this whole board did, you know, that's why the board approved $56 of cost allocation instead of my recommended $158. So much so, okay? So I'm all about fees, but we have to be able to justify them. There's different ways to justify costs. This way is the actual costs over the last three years are $1,541. Now, could we go back? And, and for weeks I've been asking, what is the justification going to be that we're going to use when we revise these? So real costs, I think is one that I can live with. I can look at the residents here and say, we're passing on real costs. Now, if we wanted to get more sophisticated, which I would support and actually had a finance director and somebody who could do this stuff, we could come up with a methodology. The roads committee, you know, could put it in the policy and we could say, we estimate it takes X hours of attorney time, Y hours of this, something to justify, but I'm not going to go back and recreate that right now.
Yes, why don't we just do, make a future?
That's a future.
Future review.
Yes.
Because our soft, I mean, somebody's got to maintain these loans for 10 years, right? Somebody's got to track and make sure they send us the money. We collect all the fees, we pay everything off, we update notice. So it's not just these initial costs that we have. There's long-term costs. I understand we get some interest to cover that, but I, I guess I could make the argument, and I'm a resident too, SIO Township is not acting as a bank. We're not a bank, right? But on the other hand, we shouldn't go charge exorbitant fees either.
I agree.
It's all reasonable, right?
I agree.
Reasonable is the magic word here.
So, so there's two parts of that.
I agree with you. You should probably re, let's reassess that 3295 and make sure, is that the right number? Because it should be a little lower, a little higher. That's, I think that's what I'm hearing. Let's save that for another time.
Exactly. But for, but for these, you know, I'd like to just charge what we can actually justify, which is what we've actually billed. This is what we've actually expended is 1,541. And then if you scroll down, it gets to the interest issue and.
Like I said, I argue you have it. We spent all time here today, for example. There's time that you got paid here for this meeting, you got paid, I got, we all, so our soft costs. So that's actually not true.
There are, there are soft costs. There are undocumented soft costs and then there's documented soft costs. And what I'm saying here tonight is I'm not gonna assess residents undocumented soft costs. And Jim, would you just scroll down for a minute? Please. So to the interest rate? Because that's then the future administrative cost.
That's the key one to talk about. I think that's the real elephant in the room.
There's, there's two, two parts of it. So, so you know, I think of it as like, what's our, because, because I come to this table saying, you know, we shouldn't make money, but we should cover our costs, right? We just want to cover our costs as a township.
Not a for-profit.
Right. So there's two parts of it. There's the opportunity cost of not investing the money, right? So I put that at 2% and you know, that's, we've been between 1 and 2% interest in general fund. And then the actual administrative costs are about 1% year over year. So I could support 3%. But I have to say, it, it's kind of, I know we're limited by the statute, but if you think about it, whether you're processing a check for $50,000 or $5, it's the same cost to process that check. And so a percentage on the SAD amount, it's not quite, doesn't quite, you know, make sense. That said, that's what we have to work with. And I would suggest that we set it at 3%. And we can, you know, get our house in order, get a policy, get something in place. We can revisit it in a few years and change the interest rate if needed.
So, so the only argument I, I give you on that one is 2% is the current rate today. I don't think if that, you know, with, with, it's been artificially low for probably the last 15 years. I think that rate's going to increase. So you just had to look at the overall cost of the cost of 10 years. I hear, I don't, five may be a little hefty. I was kind of, you know, honestly thinking four would be a fair, again, all about fairness to.
Yeah, and again, it's just.
Just wants to fair and fairness to.
And that's all I want.
Again, I'm not looking to make this a money-making enterprise.
Exactly.
I just want to break us even.
We don't have real documentation. So you know, what you have is the real documentation of, of right here. We have the actual interest rates that we've earned. I know that they are changing.
And they will change over the next 10 years.
And they will change over the next 10 years. We can set it. We can look at it again in two years. Um, but I have to say, you know, you look at our tax, tax admin fee, that's 1%.
That doesn't apply to these.
I know, but as a guidepost, we charge 1%.
That's wrong. It's not a guidepost price area.
It's a guidepost for how much it might cost to actually process ongoing SAD payments. So, so that's what I just say. I'd say there's so much policy for the future that we want to fix, but all I want to do is do right by residents. And not overcharge in terms of what we can't document in terms of like the administrative fees for this Daleview and then decide where we're going on interest rate. And obviously it would apply universally for all four.
I just think there's been historical precedent to charge the 350 for the setup for years.
With no basis.
And nobody's ever complained about it.
There's been no basis.
Well, I don't know.
Basis. We don't know.
Well, well, I've asked for, I am the clerk of this township. I have asked for basis. No one has any basis. So I don't know what else to tell you, Patrick. I mean, I'm really being real with you. If there's a basis, somebody speak up.
This is, this is the problem we have here. It's the way we've always done it. No one's ever questioned it because it's the way we've always done it. And I'm questioning it because, Mark, I went back and looked at the financial reports. And, and when I was on the board, some of those financial reports, the general fund was generating 0.5% interest, 0.2% interest, 0.9% interest. Now, one of the highest ones I saw was 2.1% interest. So to charge five is ridiculous.
I agree. I agree. That's a little high. I figured four felt recent days. It's the median rate. It's right in the middle of zero. That's my point, point, point I asked you the question.
Well, four is twice what the general fund is getting.
Today, but we also have overhead and costs.
Over, over the last 10 years. See, the problem is nobody keeps, the problem is nobody keeps records in this township. The treasurer should know, the clerk should know, the last 10 years, here's what our rolling rate is as far as interest. Here's what I wrote. And nobody does that. And I'm questioning it and I'm saying 2% now, if it changes, change it. But somebody document it.
Okay, thank, thank you, David.
This is the time we're supposed to discuss this.
This is the time.
You said we could.
This is the time the board is supposed to discuss.
We are affected by this. You're taxing us and we are affected by this.
We outburst, calm down, have a seat.
You can say that to Abby. Yeah.
I said a lot of things to Abby to quiet him down when he was having episodes here too. So it, it's, it's, it's just not time for the public comment. We had the public comment.
When is it time that our, our questions answered?
We are deliberating. I took notes on your, on your questions. I'm hoping that we will get to all of them in the course of our deliberation. But this is the time for the board to do its deliberation.
So, so two problems. There's the, certainly the point for the last 10 years, rates have been artificially, we can argue that, I mean, they've been historical 40-year, well, look at interest rates, right? I took out a mortgage for 2.5%. Back in 1980, I took out a mortgage for 21%. So they are artificially. I'm just saying there's got to be a contingency. I, I'm going to assume those days are done. And we can argue whether that's true or not, right? On that war buff, we all know, but I think those rates will undoubtedly go up and stay. It's that they have to.
And, and I would propose we revisit this in two years. We can't revisit this.
You can't do that. I think that's the, that's the problem. If we can justify this, then it would make sense, right? You know?
Okay.
I hear you.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so how do you say, how do you find a middle ground?
Yeah, I don't know. That's what I wanted to talk about.
Against David's concern, which is I think it's, yeah, it poses a fair concern against the fairness of SIO. And that's why four kind of came up to my logic tree, if you will, for four. I think that seemed to be like a fair number. We'll call it 3.75 just because it feels a little better.
I just wanted to say we need deliberation and justification. That's all.
That's my justification. Rates will undoubtedly go up and it will be underwater over the next course of time.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear from other board members who haven't spoken. Are there other board members who haven't spoken on this would like to speak?
Well, I certainly don't want to profit off of these people who have kind of banded together to do something for their neighborhood, for, for their, for their area. And I don't want to charge something that one, we're not entitled to charge. I know that our attorney said it's broad and all the engineering and all expenses incident, but just because it, does it, just because it can be broad, doesn't mean it's not limited and it's got to be based. So construction costs, engineering costs, and maybe we'll hear from some people tonight who can shed more light on why that sometimes changes and why some things aren't included initially and why they're caught later and how, how that's dealt with. I don't know enough about that. But I know that we're allowed to charge financial consultant. I hope we aren't, and I don't think we are. We're allowed to charge legal costs. We probably are on that fault, as we all know, to some extent. We're, we're, we're allowed to charge for the notice of hearing in the newspaper. We're allowed to charge for our mailing, our postage, our clerical support, the township treasurer, the extra time collecting and depositing payments, an accountant to audit financial statements. So there are a lot of things we're allowed to, to add, to tack on. We just can't do it arbitrarily. And I don't think we do. The history of, the, one of the things that I had was where does the 3250 come from? And maybe someone at one point averaged all that up and here's what it costs. I, I, I think maybe a setup fee might be different if you want to put a park bench on the quarter versus if you want to put in curbs and gutters and sewers and all the kind of things that you might be able to do under the statute. So I don't know if it should be the same or if we should be kind of dependent on the project. The, the pickle that we're in is what do we do about it today? Going forward, we need, I think, a policy and procedures. I think we need to put things on our website about how people can do this. I know that there's a, and I thank them for being here. We've got a roads committee and they obviously see the charge that they need as far as recommending a policy for us to, to adopt and, and roll out. But it's my understanding from a treasurer's comment, Donna's comment earlier, is that time is of the essence a little bit with respect to getting these on the roll. I, I don't, I don't want to rush it and do it wrong. I'm willing to compromise an interest rate. I'm willing to compromise setup fees. But going forward, I, I, I want it to be done with circumspection and I'm not saying it's not. And I'm saying, I'm not saying we'll pull the 3250 out of the air. And I'm saying, I'm not saying we'll pull the 3250 out of the air. It's probably something that was done when, when, when he inherited the gig. So, so, or ran from the job. So, uh, but, 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 but there's two things. How do we do, how do we best do it tonight in the spirit of compromise and accommodating residents? And how do we do it better going forward? So, I mean, that's how I see it, but.
Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken and would like to speak?
The only thing I'd like to clarify on why it's critical to do it tonight. These have to be on a winter bill. That's my understanding. And if we don't get everything in order tonight, because we have to start that process, then it won't happen until next year. First time. And I believe I'm going to ask you, Jim, that that's correct.
Yes.
It has to be on the winter bill. And if we can't make it work tonight, however we come up, whatever the compromise is, then it can't happen until next year. But the bills have already been paid.
So one, one thing I would say about the setup fee is I'm, I'm almost sure that it includes the fee paid to the Washington County Road Commission, because that is not a separate item for Daleview and Merlin. It's a separate item for the other two SADs. And it adds a different sort of story for each of them, but the, the, I think there are costs that people at the township, our predecessors, or even staff who aren't here tonight, but, you know, have been here for a long, long time, played a role in calculating what that setup fee would be and, and what it would include. And it has been the practice of the township. If we were to start tinkering with that, it would make the process of approving this tonight very difficult, because it's calculated into the total cost. And if we start tinkering with the total cost, then that's going to change the role that's been calculated that we need to.
We don't need to tinker with.
The question is, and how far back do you go then at this point, right? So, Will makes a solid point. If we start, if we don't, we're, we're going to try to make that decision based on right now. A little bit of conjecture. We don't have all the details. Well, in the sense that we don't know how this is all coming. I doubt that somebody just pulled that out of their hair. It was, I, I would like to think, maybe I'm being too generous. I'd like to think that somebody actually spent some, invested some time to come up with this number. So let's, let's table that and revisit that. I'm all for saying, let's reexamine that number. Is that a fair number? And maybe is the calculation incorrect? Is there a base cost, and then we had an additional percentage based on the size of the project or something that's a little more amicable? So, if it makes sense for.
And, and I just want to say, you know, there's, there's no wrong time to do the right thing. Procedurally, this is a small thing. We would not be tinkering, even with the language of the resolution, save for changing the interest rate if we want to. Here's the thing. John, you delineate the issues well. What do we, how do we do the right thing tonight? How do we do the right thing in the, in the future? Tonight, what we could do is say we were allowed to charge for all of those things, all of those things. And in the future, we should. We should charge for them, but we didn't. We didn't charge for those things. We didn't account for them. We didn't say this has anything to do with an SAD. So even if there were that estimate of $3,250 for these overhead costs, the actual was 1,541. And so Mike said at the beginning, we start with the estimated cost, we get the actual cost and make an adjustment. Does that mean we have to tinker with the roll? I don't think so, Will, because it's such a small amount. We could simply change the interest rate, adopt this, and then, if it's in order, make a motion to, that we would refund that $1,700 that we overcharged people. Because just because we're allowed to charge somebody, we didn't. That's on us.
Mike, um, do you have a comment?
Yeah, so if you're going to reduce the amount assessed, which is based on the total cost, including the setup fee, which I think is actually under the actual cost of setting it up, you're going to have to adjust the roll, and you're going to have to pass a resolution, a future resolution, to make a refund. That's the way it's done under 188. You can't keep the same role. You will be assessing for those costs which are included in the total cost.
So Mike, what do we do with the fact that the estimate of 3,250 was too high? But we couldn't, we couldn't, I couldn't dig through the accounting records.
I don't, I don't accept that it's too.
So, so hang on a minute.
No, it's really, I couldn't. I went through it. I'm just.
I, I get it. I get it. Um, so there's no accounting for legal fees. I guarantee you there were some in drafting the resolutions, in reviewing the roles, in reviewing the, or setting up the district itself. I guarantee there were some. Uh, there were publication costs. There were, there was postage, because you have to mail notice.
I understand, but we didn't charge the costs.
Charged, charged or not, you're talking about whether it was included in the total cost being assessed, because this one is not changing, right? The amount assessed for this district is not increasing or decreasing as proposed. We're only talking about the interest rate being charged and the term of the payments.
I understand. That's what's proposed.
Okay, so, so let's, let's stick with that for a minute. So when we have, no, we have no change, the role was confirmed in October of 2021, that role is deemed conclusive. So that means if you're going to reduce it, then we have to change the role.
Okay. And, and so, so, so the 5%, if at the end of the day are actual costs, tell me how that overlays with the 5% provision, like when we refunded Honey Creek and some of the others?
So, for instance, this is typically why we don't deal with refunds until the end of the district. Now, you can make a refund at any time during the existence of the term, but we typically don't do it until the end, and that's because we don't know whether we're going to have a surplus. For example, there might be defaults in the district, right?
I'm, I'm clear. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, so I, I withdraw the idea about, um, reducing the cost. I will say our estimate is, is far below. If anybody, um, you know, if we, if we get better accounting and want to start charging that. Um, but, but I get that, that, that the whole district needs to be concluded before we can consider any refunds. And that was the case with Honey Creek. So I'm clear on that. Thank you.
Did I hear a suggestion of 4% as a interest rate, Mark?
I think to even make it more comfortable and, and even favor, I'd rather have this SAD township take a little bit of the hit than the resident state hit. I'm actually going to propose 3.75. I think that's more than fair and that's our protection. We, we accommodate the SAD residents.
Mark, what about the 5% that's been charged for the past 20 years?
It's not a time for public comment. Thank you.
We can't change what's been done.
It's, it's like, how about the 5% you paid on the interest card for last 20? I mean, you, you can obviously attack everything, right?
So, so is there, is that a motion?
Yes.
3.75?
But can we do, is that part of what Mr. Collier was just saying?
No, it's just separate from changing the overall cost.
It's separate.
I close 3.75.
Is there a second for that?
Are you moving?
Let's be clear.
That on page two, that the interest rate of 5% shall be changed to 3.75%?
I think that is what he's moving.
Yeah.
And, and I would ask counsel.
Isn't that in the ordinance though?
No, it's in the resolution.
It's in the resolution.
Paragraph three.
I would ask our attorney if, if that would appear to be in compliance with Act 188, and whether it is binding on prior SADS or future SADS, or if it's only for this SAD.
It's only for this one, and it would be to adopt that resolution with the amended interest rate of 3.75 inserted in paragraph three.
And, and if we botched it and it should have been something else, we're okay to come up with an interest rate either higher or lower in the future if we deem it appropriate to do so?
For every special assessment district, you can charge, actually, the statute, I, I believe the statute requires you to charge interest up to 8% per annum where there are no bonds issued for the project.
Okay, so, so going forward, we can charge, assuming we charge interest, and we're likely to, based on the sentiment at this table today about trying to recover costs but not inflate them. Uh, we can set a different rate if we think it should have been, should, that should be different. Based on what the market's doing, based on what we're earning, what we're paying, all that kind of thing. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I can imagine a scenario in which maybe you ultimately, the township board ultimately adopts a policy that sets that rate. Um, I think uh, Mark had suggested 1% over LIBOR, right? Um, provided that that does not exceed 8% per annum, which would then comply with the statute.
All right. So is there a second for the motion?
I have a question or a clarification. Are you asking a question in a manner that, say, we're four years into the SAD and we see a problem? Are you, is that what you were addressing?
Well, I.
Or are we talking about future?
I'm talking about the next SAD for the next. I assume, once we set 3.75, that's what they get for the whole 10 years.
It's like a mortgage. You're locked in for the.
I'm not even.
Yep.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I understood here.
And if they get a, a little bit low rate or, then so.
So is there a second for the motion? 3.7 that would change the interest rate in section three?
I'll support.
So we have move by Brzezow, support by Flintoff. Um, is there any further discussion before we, um, consider the motion to approve the resolution as amended?
I think that was just a motion.
I guess you're right. Maybe we do have to have a vote first on the motion to change the interest rate, and then we would have a motion, a vote on the resolution.
Yes, please.
Sorry, I'm skipping ahead. All right, so, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so now we have an amended resolution with 3.75 interest rate. Now, are we ready to move forward with a vote on that resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm ready to vote on it, but I have a question. It's come up about why these costs change. And I don't know if we want to hear from someone or no. I.
No changes on this one. We can talk about it. We're, we're going to have three more resolutions to approve for three different SADs.
And you'll invite the gentleman who's here to talk about that at the time?
Yep. And we, and we have with us the engineer who worked on some of these, so all of these, actually, um, in one way or another. Um, okay, so in that case, um, I would like to call a question on the resolution.
I'll offer the resolution.
Okay. So my motion is made by Flintoff, support by Brzezow. Uh, the model motion to adopt the resolution supplementing the terms of the Daleview Drive Special Assessment District as amended.
This should be a roll call.
Okay, uh, please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brzezow?
Yes.
Um, McLaughlin? Reiser?
Yes.
I wasn't forgetting your name. Motion, resolution adopted.
Okay, thank you. That moves us on to the next item on the agenda, which is Merlin Way Special Assessment District Supplemental Assessment Role. And here, um, there were some questions, and I'd like to invite, um, Phil Maynor to come forward um, and respond to some of those. We, uh, and this is one of two SADs where there was an engineering phase, which was, um, a practice of the township, which is now sort of in question. But at this time, um, the practice of the township was to, especially when there was significant engineering to occur, uh, to have an engineering phase of the SAD first. And then the second phase would be the construction phase, and that is part of what is, I think, the issue here. Um, there's also, um, an issue with costs that, um, were brought to light, I guess, or imposed by the road commission's permitting process that um, came as somewhat of a surprise. So Joe, maybe you can provide us with some background.
Sure. Um, so the way that project kind of, and I guess I'd kind of like to go back a little bit and give kind of a background. Um, when the community came to the township, we kind of looked at, um, what an estimated cost would be. Um, and, and like you said, well, we, we accepted an engineering design phase to put plans together so that we could send that to bid to contractors. We actually sent Merlin Way six different contractors um, for the township in order to get, wanted to bid from them. So for Merlin Way, out of the six contractors we sent that to, only two of them actually responded on the bid, and that was Cadillac Asphalt and ASI. ASI at the time had.
So guys, you reclarify. So you just set up for bid. You set up the six different contractors for bid. That was one of the challenges. I recently helped things for bid. The answer is yes. And out of the six, two replied.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so we brought the two bids back to the township, that the community recommended ASI, because they were the lowest bidder. Um, at that time, the role was moved forward with that bid, um, to move forward with accepting the SAD and then setting the role. Um, one thing that we realized afterwards is, once that it's approved, then we went to the road commission and asked for a permit. At that time, the road commission reviewed the plan and added the requirement for additional ditching outside of the SAD along Marshall Park, um, tree removals, curb cutting and all of that.
And what was this?
Um, I was trying to search through my emails, um, but it was, it was well before the project actually started that, because we didn't have a permit yet. And they sent us this requirement as part of our permit to get it secured, to have this additional work done.
We knew about it.
We knew about it after the, the role was set. We found out about it during the permitting process, and then the project was moved forward.
Are those a little, like, little, like, little, like, water dams, for lack of a better term? Like, as I went to the property, the entrance to the property, I can see like little monuments or something that you set up to.
Check dams, yes. That slows the water down as it runs down.
And I would assume that's the cost you're referring to, that the county.
That was part of the. Ditched it out, closed it out.
Yeah.
It was out. There was several large trees there that were removed as part of the project and part of the embankment along that area. So that was their requirement.
Is it okay? We go back and forth a little?
Sure.
So when, so we knew about it before the construction, and then what I'm trying to understand is when did residents know about it? And when did residents know about the additional costs? Because I remember when the tree fund, you know, the trees were planted, and I think that was after that. So when, when did we, I'm asking us, inform residents?
I'm, I'm not sure. I think that was a little bit of a miscommunication then between us, the township, and the residents, that that work was required. Um, I know I sent it to the township, and I think the residents, they have been waiting, where, so they might not have seen the actual vote.
So I have a question. You deal with SAD. Hello, my name is John Reiser. I'm new here. So I understand you are an engineer with Washington Engineering?
Correct.
And, um, you deal with a lot of the SADS and residents who want to do things to their neighborhoods, HOAs, things like that?
I've done with, dealt with several of them, yes.
And is there usually a contact person? So you can say like, hey, David, we're running into this situation, or, or, or how? With whom do you communicate in the township as well as in the, uh, in the district itself?
So there, I'm dealing with, um, board members or the road committee.
The road committee, like, they, they, like the SAD Township Road Committee, or the Road Committee on Merlin Drive Road Committee and the Wagner Road Committee and the.
I invite residents to contact, I invite residents from the road committee, from the communities to contact me early.
You're not talking about RAC at the, the new Township Road Committee, just for John's clarification. He's talking about the, the neighbors, right? Like on Merlin Way.
It, it's, it's complicated, right? Because in the past, we had a road committee that operated differently than our current road advisory committee. It was more.
Operational.
Well, yes, it was, there were some members of it. It sort of devolved to, you know, pretty much a, a group of about three people, and, you know, they were very hands-on, and they played a very active role in kind of coaching um, neighborhood leaders, um, of SAD efforts. And we have reconstituted our. And we have reconstituted our roads advisory committee and they are in the business right now or in the, we're in the process right now of sort of figuring out a different way for the township to handle SADs than we have in the past. But Joe has been doing this work for the township for years and that span both committees and both approaches.
So if we, going forward, if there are, I mean, I assume it's like, I don't want to say a guessing game, but I assume you do your best job at figuring out what it's going to cost based on the experience you have. And then something comes up where it's too high or the shoulder or permits, and so things come up. Is that kind of part of it?
Yeah, that's part of it.
So how do we, going forward, do a better job of communicating with the boots on the ground, the people who went around door to door asking for this? So that they, the sticker shock can be absorbed, understood, questioned, so that they're not, I don't want to say pissed off or behind public record, so they're not upset.
Good job, Chris.
They're not upset that, that these incremental costs, which are kind of part of it, have occurred. So any suggestions in that regard?
Well, the one thing I will say is, you know, we should get through the permitting process with the road commission or if we're going to any other, you know, permitting entity, that should be all done before the roll is set.
There you go.
It sounds like it kind of falls on us, right? I mean, so we knew about it.
That was our mistake.
Yeah.
I can see where they're upset, like-
But haven't they always done that? Or is that part?
No, that was always the process was to get the engineering done.
Okay.
Get the contact bids, get the SAD set up, and then we move forward with permits because-
This is sort of unusual.
This is kind of a chicken and egg here, because if you get the bids, and this is happening, you get the bids, and the bids are much higher than the homeowners are willing to accept, you've gone through the permitting process and paid fees.
And how much was the- How much was the hiring fee?
Well, the permitting fee for this one was, I think, $500.
Okay.
So, but-
So when did, when did the residents know they had this $10,000 added fee? I mean, because you said they, they knew about this before the project started, right? You knew about the project, you knew about this $10,000 fee before they laid a single ounce of asphalt, correct? So when were the, when were the, I mean, they should have known right then and there, right?
I need to go back and-
The supervisor about a month and a half ago, alerting or a month ago, alerting us to this meeting, and that's when we found out they went up by $10,800.
Yeah, that's a problem.
But Joe, you said that we knew about it prior to the permitting, which was prior to construction.
I didn't, it came to light during permitting process.
Thank you, and I'm just trying to be clear, Joe, I mean, and, and look, we are not an easy organization to work with. And you do a good job, but Donna, it's true. And, but I gotta say, we do contract with you for some level of project management, right? And so what was your, I'm not talking about the future, I'm talking about Merlin Way. What was your understanding of, of who should have been communicating to the Merlin Way residents when that came to light? Because I know that things have changed. Would you expect it to be the supervisor, you?
I didn't see a policy in place.
Do other contracts, do, how many jurisdictions do you work with? Municipalities, townships, villages, cities?
I work with every township in Washington County.
Do some of them have written SAD?
Yes.
Policy?
Some.
Not asking you, but-
Some do and some do not do SADs at all. They won't, they won't do them.
Why?
Because-
It's a lot of work, and they don't have policies in place to do it. So I've approached townships, asked them to do it, and we have residents, and they just won't.
Joe, was, was part of the problem here that built into this SAD and Daleview, we had contingents, the way that you had structured the sort of the package, I guess, for us to approve, included this contingency cost element to sort of cover cost increases that might occur in the course of the project. Is that, am I correct that that's?
That is correct, yeah. We always recommend for any construction project that you had a construction contingency fund to cover. The way the contracts are written for both companies, it is a unit price contract, so they get paid for the material necessary to build the roadway. We provided them an estimate of materials based on our design plans. And of course, we know roadways are never exactly perfect, so when they go through and they have to meet a grade associated with our design to meet the road commission standards.
So I think contingency is 10%, is that right?
Yes.
So, so what I was trying to get at is, I think part of what slowed down the reaction to this cost increase is it wasn't clear immediately whether a contingency would cover it.
That could very well be, yes, yeah, because we did have enough in our contingency fund that would have covered it. Clear, Flin?
What contingency fund are you talking about? And, I mean, we approved a roll for $233,044. That's what the residents thought they were paying. Whether or not the contingency fund was within that, the 10% is sort of not the point because, because it, it wasn't enough. So I guess I'm unclear on what the connection is between what we assessed and the contract.
Everything, Jess, I mean, you're going to have a house bill, they're going to say it's $550,000, but there's always a fee in there, it might, it's not a fee.
But I don't know that we, we ever expressed that.
I agree, and we fell down, I mean, let's be honest here, we fell down by not communicating back, hey, we found this extra 10 grand of fees, and then we-
Yeah, yeah.
-fell down not telling them about those fees.
Well, certainly, but what I'm trying to figure out here is we've assessed, we approved the roll for $233,000, right? And then-
Oh, you're talking to me.
Right, and so I guess what I'm unclear about is when we, right? I mean, if it's our township engineer or any one of us, it's on us, the township. We knew it was going to be more than that. We knew it was going to be $10,000 more than that. And we did not act, we did not have a special meeting and do a supplemental assessment.
Well, that's what we're doing now. And my, my point is that because there was a contingency built into that original $233,044, it wasn't immediately apparent that this wasn't going to be covered. And it, it delayed the reaction until we had a clearer sense of how the contingency fee wasn't going to cover this.
And I'm sorry, Will, I'm not understanding because the, not into the resolution that we passed. You're talking about-
I'm talking about the, the work order that you and I, and the motion on October 12th, 2021, were empowered to sign in order to accomplish the SAD on Merlin Way, the other cost of $233,044 total.
Yeah.
And you and I signed, eventually signed the agreement, and it included a contingency. And that contingency, the point I was trying to elicit from Joe, whether it's true or not, is whether that could have played a factor in sort of slowing down our reaction because we were thinking, or you were thinking that maybe it would be covered.
Wait, but, but we didn't sign a contract for more than $233,000.
But the $233,000 included both the ASI bid and the engineering cost and other things, including a contingency to cover 10, up to 10% of-
So you said it was, yeah.
Yeah, so if you look at the list that was approved by the board, there's, like Will said, several line items. ASI's fee, contingency fund.
It, it, it sounds like you and I made a mistake. I mean, I'm just trying to figure this out, right? We, we, we passed-
Mistake we made, we just not communicating back, hey, this thing-
Well, we may not have, we might not have properly estimated the cost at the outset as well, potentially, or set enough contingency, I don't know.
Potentially, but also on the process side, it, it was a little different than usual or, or kind of, I mean, I see now in retrospect how this could happen because we approved the roll for $233,000 and then we didn't have the contracts prepared at the time. Or they hadn't been approved by the attorney, something like that.
Right.
And so we passed a motion that's empowered the supervisor and the clerk to work with the township attorney to approve contracts that conform with the role that we had adopted.
Correct.
And it sounds to me that if you and I signed a contract that includes something that goes beyond that $233,000.
No, that's why we're here, is because we signed a contract that was limited to within that SAD. And now there are costs in excess of the $233,000.
Okay.
And what I all, the only point I was trying to make by bringing up the contingency is I think that could have, in some ways, delayed the reaction to the cost because we had to sort of like get a full sense of, of the costs that were, even sort of beyond the contingency before we would know.
Are you talking about when the invoices come in and Rebecca compares it to what's authorized? What, what part of the process?
Well, I, whatever, whenever it was, became clear that the contingency was not going to cover it. And that's, I think, when you should have communicated to the, the folks in, I don't know, Merlin. But, you know, the, the clarity came and we immediately started talking with township attorneys, like, okay, so what do we do in a situation where the costs are exceeding? Because, you know, I, this is the first round of SADs I've ever done, so I don't know what to do. And, you know, I haven't had this experience before where the costs exceeded the amount, so I had to figure it out with the township attorneys, and that's why we're here tonight.
And this is the first one that I have done that we've actually exceeded that contingency fund as well.
But did you think we were going to exceed the contingency fund before we started construction?
No, I mean-
Well, we still think that, yeah. It's 10% of $194,000 or $233,000.
We used it, plus we needed more, is that it?
Yeah.
We used it and needed more.
Yeah, the contingency fund is based on the contractor's price, yeah.
And the stuff that put it over the edge was the edge, uh, 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 where-
Right, actually, the invoice the ASI sent us actually far exceeded even that, and we negotiated to back down for the actual cycle construction work. We actually negotiated $11,000 out of their invoice.
Which I think was one of David's questions, was if they had, if they had waived $8,000, how come it's still $10,800?
Because the actual cost of construction for the roadway, when they sent us that invoice, it exceeded the contingency fund by almost $11,000 more than that contingency fund.
Is this the one that had the tree, the high height?
It does, yeah.
Okay, yeah. And then also the, the stuff at the road with the, the, the crust, the limestone and the netting for a little, the, the, like a little-
In Marshall, yeah.
How would we do it different? If you were to do this one different, what would we do differently? What, we got road commission people here. What's the takeaway from this? Like, because there's going to be more of these.
Well, I mean, we need to get the permit placed first.
Right.
Spend that $500 and get that permit reviewed by the road commission. I think that would definitely help.
So, and why don't we do that? Is it because the, because the neighbors don't want to spend it? Or the township just doesn't want to spend the money to just do it on behalf of the residents?
Just the past that we've followed in the past is get the contractors pricing, get the SAD set up, and get the permits.
So the permit will give us a little clearer picture of the scope of work?
Correct, yes.
Contingency on the cost?
Yes.
Well, it's, I think, isn't this unusual though for the road commission to, to ask for this amount of additional add-on cost? Usually the, my experience, limited as it is, is that usually they're saying, well, we want to make sure that you're rebuilding the shoulders, you know, to our specifications.
Usually shoulders or culverts.
That's right, so they had to do a culvert replacement.
Yes, yeah.
Was that, was this kind of a- Peanuts compared to what happened to Merlin Way?
Right, there were some very large trees that were moved and banking and ditching and, so.
Clear, Flin?
So the $10,800 that we're being asked to add on, is that, how does, I, I understand that there's outstanding work to be done and also work that's done that's not been paid for. Can you talk about that split and how the $10,000?
Sure, the, the $10,000 is specifically for the work that the road commission required in the right of way of Marshall Drive for the kitchen, tree removals and everything. That amount of money is still outstanding and has not been paid to ASI at this point. The other repairs have been made on, um, Merlin Way, with the exception of the mailbox posts. Now, the contractor raised the posts, but then realized the posts that were existing are too short. They're getting new posts and they're going to reset those posts in concrete. That is still pending work to be done. It would be my recommendation, if this is approved, not to pay ASI the last $10,800 until the township is happy and residents are happy with the repairs that were done.
Is this going to be a fee for the posts and the concrete or is that?
No, the posts, the posts are done. That's included in the contract.
Okay.
So that, there's no extra charge for that. There's no, there's no more charges that will get sent.
Other than the $10,000 if we approve it, and you're saying don't pay it until the job's complete?
Yeah, a little bit.
Yes, that's, that's what I would, but the work that the $10,800 would be charged towards has occurred. Has occurred, yes.
And who approves and says that it's done? Who's the person that goes in and says, yep, this is completed to our satisfaction?
What we've done in the past is asked the road commission to come out and, and walk it and give us input and feedback. Even though it's a private road, they've done it and, and walked it and said, yes, this is-
Okay, so we release those final funds. What I'm hearing is once we get some kind of written approval from the road commission, says, yep, this thing's good to go.
Yeah, I would ask for, you know, from, from road commission and also Joe.
And I'd like to hear, you know, obviously hear from the residents too.
Yeah, and I know you were-
And I, we've done a lot of repairs and I haven't actually had a chance to talk to them yet about those repairs, so.
And one note for the future, Joe, is, you know, I really think that the township needs to get a better scope of work for your work so that we're really, really clear on who is the project manager for each of these. Because I think we've, it's evolved, but I think we need a very clear project manager for the township. And I don't know that that's always been clear that that's you or us or who.
Right.
Is that fair?
Yeah, we can work together to find that scope more clearly.
And, and I think that also actually reminds me of one of the other questions that came up during public, public hearings. And that is, how come there was engineering early on and then there was engineering later on? And my understanding is that the, the first engineering was the design for engineering phase, and the latter engineering was the construction engineering, which is, includes that kind of oversight.
Oversight with the contractor, communication with the homeowners, you know, our site personnel onsite, working directly with the contractor. He's out there marking the repairs and dealing with getting testing done by the testing company. MTC does the density testing onsite.
Is it common that there are two engineering's? They had to be procured services?
We typically do two, one for engineering services, design services, get everything ready. And then we do an engineering observation.
So what, what if you do the engineering and they say, oh, that's so expensive, then the, the district has to pay that?
And that's, that's, that's a problem. That's what the township was trying to address by having an engineering phase SAD sort of separate, which is what occurred at Merlin and Daleview.
So how, so how do you, so do these usually require two engineering's? And then how are those engineering's paid with, in your practice, in your experience?
For SADs or in general?
SADs, SADs.
So the engineering fees are paid by the SAD because they're, they're at a cost.
So it, it might cost them a few hundred bucks just to look into it and they said, oh, we can't afford this road.
It depends on what we're doing. I mean, I'll look at a roadway and give them an idea of cost. I've done that numerous times. Once it gets passed there and we're actually surveying it and putting together design plans, that's an actual engineering cost for SAD.
I'll be quiet this game.
You put your, you put your finger on an issue that we're going to have to resolve, and actually the road advisory committee is looking at this very question. Clear, Flint?
Okay, it, but still, $15,700 was for the construction engineering phase, the observation, the-
Observation, construction state, and testing company.
Right, and, and, and so Joe, I mean, is, I don't know if somebody else from the township has already asked you, but I mean, in, in light of the error that I think we made, and, and I think, you know, some of the responsibility on- and I think, you know, some of the responsibility on you, too, I mean, is there, are there any costs that you could refund the township or hold back or anything? I I don't know if anybody's talked to you about that. You don't have to answer on the spot here, but I will say that, you know, part of the reality is that, you know, I think we, the big we, screwed up, right?
And I I don't know, I don't think there's unanimity, but at the table, I'm not saying that we made an error at this table or predators made an error. These things happen. It's like, how do we account for them? How do we deal with it? How do we minimize them? I I don't know. I'm not here to point the finger at people. You screwed this one up, you screwed this one up, we gotta dip into our pockets. I think these things happen. I mean,
It was it was like a communication. I mean, these costs would have been these costs no matter what happened. These were going to be the true cost.
Well, well, no.
We did a poor job of communicating those costs to the the homeowner. That's that's, I think we could, I don't think we did a poor, we could do a much better job, let's go tighter again.
But I'll say, but I'll say
But those would have been the cost no matter what happened.
But but that it may not have gone forward. I mean, this
No, 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 this this came in after. It was already in process, if I understand correctly.
No, I'm sorry, if I
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, here's the thing.
Yeah.
I I So so here's the thing, you know, we, the big we, township slash township engineer, knew that there was significantly more work to be done at permitting, okay? That was before, before. So so we we approved the role, and at that point, we, the big we, knew there's more work, it's not gonna be enough. We should have done a supplemental assessment. We would have taken it to homeowners, they would have said up or down. Unlike Wagner Ridge, Merlin was not 100%. And unlike any of the other three, Merlin's incredibly expensive, right? We're talking about each parcel at $24,000. I mean, it was already gonna be the most expensive road per homeowner, so I think it's very fair to say we would have had a hearing. I I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at the split, but it was not unanimous, and there aren't that many parcels on Merlin. So I I just have to say, we, I'm not trying to point fingers at individuals, but between our township engineer and township board, you know, that the result of the poor communication is that there are costs that residents found out about about six weeks ago that we knew about December 2021-ish?
No, no, you're you're making a, you're creating kind of a mythology around this.
Hold on, Will. Joe, when did we know about the extra work at permitting?
I need to go back through. I was trying, while we were sitting there waiting, to find my emails from this
Uh, before construction started.
Because we had to get the permitting.
Before construction started is my point, though.
And my point is that you wouldn't know that it wasn't covered by the by the agreement within the 233,000 that we'd already approved until later.
So, no, but our township engineer has told us there was all this extra work you didn't expect. You you can estimate things. You you knew it was gonna be more. We knew it was gonna be more.
We knew it was gonna be $10,800 more, but we assumed
It's a bonus.
What I'm saying is you don't know that it wasn't covered by
I said the contingency fund was there to use for that work, and then at the end, we realized that the contingency fund wasn't going to cover it.
Yeah.
So I I mean, I understand both ends.
Yeah, I'm just saying in retrospect.
Yes.
$10,800 of extra work, you know, for this. We we should, we should have brought it back.
Well, do you think that the folks on Merlin would say, I I, you know, I I would be surprised if they got all the way to the point where they were gonna have their road paved, that they'd done all this work, they gathered the signatures, they knew that it was gonna cost them each over $20,000 over 10 years to pay for it. Do you think that the incremental increase of the $10,800 would have caused them to pull a plug on the whole thing?
I I don't know, but what I'm saying is, it was not unanimous. It it, this is not our, you know, it's it's each of the, you know, parcels, so I'm just saying, it's an open question.
They made the point, though, like, at the time that cost occurred, it was fell within the contingency range. Unfortunately, other factors subverted that contingency and went on.
But it was an additional scope.
Understood.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, it's like, is it a legitimate expense? Is it, is it accurately borne? Was it necessary to get approval? If it's a legitimate and required expense, then is it fair? Is it just? Is it lawful to assess it against the
Right.
District members as much as it, we gotta play our nose to do it? I don't know. That's that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, me too.
And I think we heard from our township attorney at the top of the meeting that because this is a private road, we don't have a choice about whether it includes us in the SAD.
I don't remember that.
The constitution about giving gifts, about municipal giving gifts.
Am I remembering you correctly?
A council's only
Yeah, loaning loaning money for a private purpose is constitutionally not permissible. The only exception to that is loaning credit for the purpose of a construction of a private road pursuant to Act 188. But in that instance, there is, there are some opinions out there regarding whether the township could in part or in whole defray the cost. That is, in other words, you cannot defray any of the costs by using taxpayer money to fund improvements to private property.
That's why we don't give $10,000 to these projects on private roads, but we do, or the township in the past has given $10,000 towards other SADs.
Can I inject one thing? The added cost is actually for Marshall Road, which is a public road. So, but the township
Oh, one more point on that note. So I'm on Joe's trip for a minute here. So we already authorized tree funds for those trees on Marshall Road. And we did. And those are public funds that we use for Marshall Road to put trees in front of
In the right-of-way Marshall Road, correct?
There you go.
When we take trees down.
And we did it. No, but we hadn't even taken the trees down. The road commission did. And I raised a question, remember, Will? Because I said, hey, isn't that private, you know, isn't that a private road or private property? I addressed it with you. I was like, David, did you ask us to do this? And and you hadn't, and and you explained to me it was in the right-of-way, and so it was legit. So, Joe, how much of this 10,800 is technically on the legally on the public road?
I would say at least 90% of it was in the right-of-way, because it was the ditching along the right-of-way. They had the stone, the tree removals. There was some grading that went into Merlin Drive at that area, mostly just the tree removals in order to cut the bank back.
So it's kind of a complicated question. It's like a private road SAD prompted necessary work on a public road. Who pays?
What's the legal counsel have to say about that?
Well, so we did debate this, and my understanding was that because this was included as part of the SAD, it had to be, the cost had to be included.
Who debated it?
I I debated it with, or I discussed it with Mike Homier, and my understanding of that conversation is that because this was a part of the SAD, the cost had to be within the SAD. Now, it's it's, I I think, a question whether the benefit of the drainage is necessitated by the SAD or part of the SAD. I don't know. I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but that's the way it was presented. This is a part of the SAD project, and the cost has to therefore be included in the SAD.
And we've already used the tree fund. I mean, we're gonna
So wait, just wait a second. So the the person who was impacted by the loss of the trees is outside of the SAD. So he is not, his property is not a part of the SAD. The trees were in the right-of-way adjacent to his property, and so it was trying to deal with a situation where someone who's outside of the project and the tree removal on his land was
I agree with the use of it. I'm I'm just saying it's complicated because it's private property, public funds for trees on private property in the right-of-way.
In the right, in the
Of a public road. So what I'm saying is, we use public funds for improvement because it was in the public right-of-way.
Right. So can I ask a question of our attorney? And if you say private session or no comment in public, I can respect that. But to the extent that part of the cost was used to make improvements on a public road where presumably all motorists will benefit from not having a shoulder that's washed out.
That's right.
Is, I'm asking him, is, is, is that something that we could do if we wanted to allocate funds toward that without violating Act 188?
So I'd want to take a closer look at it and have a better understanding, but I would put it this way. But for the fact that this road was being improved, the taxpayers would not have incurred any expense related to those improvements. They would not have been required. They would not have been part of any permit. The township on its own would not have pursued those improvements.
But to the extent that it's always been a crappy intersection, and there's always been issues there, would that be sufficient to justify it, or is that something you'd still have to look at?
So if the if the township on its own said, look, this is a crummy intersection, and we want it fixed, and the road commission said, yeah, we'll fix it, it's gonna cost X amount of dollars, will you allocate general fund money? That would be a public purpose that you could fund. The problem is, I don't think that that was the sequence of events.
This this only happened because of the SAD.
But you never told them about these extra monies, and they could have made a decision that's
I appreciate that you have an opinion, but it's not the time.
No, I think
So are there any other comments?
I have some comments.
Right.
This is my SAD.
So come forward and have a seat, David. Share your comments.
Two points that the board must understand. I personally handed this SAD documentation to Bryce Kelly.
Yeah.
Who retired in 2018.
From 2018?
2019.
2019, okay. So three years ago, I handed this paperwork in, and at that point in time, we were given an estimate, rough estimate, back in the envelope, of between 107, 150 and 175,000 dollars. So we got the bid of 230, and it was a sticker shot, but we said, well, okay, price is going up. Now, the question I have, Mr. Homier said, we can't spend public money on a private road, but is it okay to spend private money on a public road, which is what this is all about? And that section of Marshall Road has been worked on by the road commission over and over again, but they have never put those rocks in place. They used our project to force us to fix Marshall Road when they should have done it a long time ago. And I think we're being screwed, quite frankly.
One of the tensions with the road commission, that they seize opportunities to get people to
All private people to pay public
The other thing is, Marshall Road is a connector road that is covered under the Townshipwide Road SAD, which these people pay into $85 a year for 10 years. So we should, we can take money from that Townshipwide Road SAD. I mean, that's, it's gonna be a whole can of worms, but to cover this cost.
Can I just ask a follow-up of Joe?
Sure, please.
Um, I'm I'm sorry, Gene, if I can ask a follow-up of Joe in relationship to what David said. So the road commission, can you just, can you tell us why the road commission decided to do that extra work? Is it typical that because there's work already going on, they'll take the opportunity to improve where they can? Or why is it that the road commission decided that extra work needed to be done? Was it for the benefit of Marshall or Merlin or a combination?
My honest feeling, it was the benefit of Marshall.
Why you say that?
Because the drainage at the intersection of Merlin Way only has a small portion of roadway that tips the front. Majority of the rutting that happens on Marshall Drive is the water running down the roadway because there are no ditches there.
Oh.
There weren't.
There weren't.
You guys put it
We both, yeah, the homeowners placed one there. So a majority of the water on Merlin Way runs into their property, down to their stormwater.
There was a benefit for Marshall Road. I mean, I I gotta kind of sort
Oh, I I get it. I I'm just dealing with the facts that, you know, they're presented. This was part of the SAD, so we're trying to deal with the cost of the SAD.
My question I have is, what's the funding of SAD? Is it all spoken for? Can we do that? Is it a cupboard?
We can, we could, I could, I mean, we could do, pull it from general fund, we could pull it from more appropriately Townshipwide SAD. I'm just saying, if, 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 that's how we would do it.
Well, I, the treasurer just suggested something that might be a compromise, and that is, because this is arguably a public road that has been improved.
Yes.
And the township did not give the $10,000 to this project because it was deemed a private road SAD, that we could view the cost of the ditch improvement as a a public road improvement that therefore qualifies for the $10,000 input from the township.
I think you've got six people at the table who are willing to do that.
Yeah.
But I'm worried about the guy on the TV screen and whether he thinks there's any any liability if we were to do that.
You're muted, Mike.
Sorry, to the extent that these were public road improvements, like I said, that you certainly can spend public money on public road improvements. So I I don't, legally, I don't have any concern about whether or not you could allocate those funds for that purpose. I don't know initially whether those, and it doesn't sound like those costs were specified at least in the project costs upfront, but I don't know that.
They were not.
They were not.
They were, they came after the fact. That's part of the problem.
That's the issue. It's it's an additional scope, Mike.
It was, it was kind of a change order imposed by the road commission.
And and I, and I say additional scope because that's what we're hearing from our engineer. It was additional work proposed.
Which focuses on public roads, right? The road commission focused on public roads.
The road commission is required.
Well, the road commission also placed, you know, permitting requirements on the private
I also want to acknowledge Gene has had her hand up.
Well, okay, Gene, please.
Um, I've lived there 22 years. That ditch has looked the same for 22 years. The road commission has come out for 22 years, dug a little bit, tried to repair it, and it does, it comes from beyond our road, west of Merlin Way and down. And after we had our road paved for the past six months, the ditch looks about the same that it has for the last 22 years. It gets filled in, leaves and rocks, it washes away. And when I drove home a week or two ago, I thought, what is this? Where they put in all those? So we didn't change the road. It looked the same to me in the past 22 years as it has the past six months. And they've taken the opportunity, as Will just said, that's what the road commission does, they take that opportunity, sneak in the back door here.
Yeah.
And do a project and put it on us.
That's good, everybody.
An increase just a few weeks ago.
I think we all agree this is coming
I think, I think
I have a question. Oh, I'm, we're doing it. I know that. I suspected. The question I have is, what's fair to the taxpayer? What's fair to Merlin? Of the 10,000, is it
10,800.
Of the 10,800, what percent is for Merlin and what percent was for Merlin Drive?
Yeah, for Marshall.
Marshall.
Marshall is not
Marshall, I meant Marshall and Merlin. I I'm thinking of the dirt road Merlin. I can see it in my eyes with the
Yeah.
Yeah. Marshall and Merlin. How how would you attribute it?
I would probably say it's probably 90% for Marshall, about 10% for Merlin.
And why should Merlin get stuck with the 10%? And I'm not, I I said it that way, but why should they be attributed that 10%? Why do you say that?
It's just there's some grading that was done in the embankments up into Merlin Way's driveway, so it'd be a small percent.
So if we were to take 10, 8 times .9, and then, I mean, what I'm thinking of doing is making an amendment that gives a bump, but gives a much smaller bump to the extent that Merlin bet, and the others will be borne by a SAD or general township money. I think, I think people could live with that. You can include that in your lawsuits.
Oh, I was just gonna say, if the township will take, if the township will take the 90% to their general fund, I'll go to the rest personally.
Yeah, we're talking about big bucks, 106 bucks.
No, 10%.
10% of.
10,800.
Joe's talking about something different.
Joe, thank you.
So you said you need to bet, you need to delta, so there's no impact to the residents. We take 90% of 10,800, write it on that. We apply it to general fund.
No. Townshipwide SAD funds 400.
Okay, right. The township absorbs it through some type of fund.
We should have assessed that before we spend it. But the SAD, right?
The townshipwide SAD, $85 per parcel.
Now, the question I have, being the new guy, can we afford that?
Yes.
Couldn't the state afford it?
Yes. And it has to be very clearly stated that this is what we have done when private or public SADs, neighborhoods with public roads, contribute $10,000 towards the project.
Well, we don't have to make that motion tonight. We can make that motion in the future. All we need to do, the motion tonight, is what to do on this and how much to add.
I understand, but that's the background.
We don't have, we don't have, I think the simple solution here is that we would just simply not be increasing the cost.
Right.
We would just be approving the change in the percentage of the interest rate.
And I'll volunteer to draft up. I can work with you, Will, on bringing the motion that Donna's talking about to our next meeting.
Yeah, I just want, because.
I agree.
Being a private road SAD, and it's very unique at the end of the road.
So.
And I want to.
But we do have to commit to doing that, because the cost has already been incurred. The work has already been done. So we all have to.
Yeah.
Understand that we have to pay for it.
Should I move that we direct the clerk to prepare a resolution directing 90% of 10,800 be allocated from SAD account 400 for the Marshall Road improvements?
Right. Second.
So we don't have to get a revised bill to cover the 10%.
Yeah, I got it.
We can trust Joe to handle that part of it. But we have a motion by risers, support by Flintoff.
To direct the clerk to bring a resolution.
To the next regular meeting. That would accomplish the payment of 90% of the cost of the Marshall Road improvements at the intersection with Merlin Way.
Yeah. But let's get the dollars and cents on the resolution done tonight, so we can get the role set.
Yes. And I want to.
The role doesn't have to be changed.
Okay.
Because we've taken this cost off of it.
But we still need to amend the resolution.
Yes, we do. That's the next thing. But let's, let's do your risers' resolution first.
I know it must give them comfort that we're not going to go, that we're just going to get the money for it.
I understand.
Yeah, so it's about 97.20. You'll do the math too. Yeah, so I'm ready to.
I want to thank Joe. Joe, thank you for being. You know, I know I just straight up asked you, but then you said yes, so thank you.
Well, we have a motion. We have a move by risers, support by Flintoff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is adopted, passed. Now we are moving on to the resolution, which we will need to modify. I presume that you would like to make the same interest rate motion for this one as you did for the other one, Mark?
Yes.
And Will, could we maybe go through, if we could process-wise, go through, mark this up the way we want to in full, and then just vote on it once?
Yeah, that's, I think that makes sense.
Good.
All right, so.
The resolution.
We're talking about the resolution. We'll just have to take out of it the change to the cost.
I'm looking right now.
So if you look at the Daleview Drive, that gives a template. So I think what we would do is, okay, page one of Merlin Way, I would say we should strike the third whereas clause. Page, page 25, it's the.
You say page 25.
It's the second whereas from the bottom.
The first page of the Merlin Way resolution. Strike the third whereas clause. As long as everybody agrees.
And the fourth.
Strike the fourth.
And replace paragraph number one with paragraph number one from Daleview.
So paragraph number one would be replaced with, "The Township Board is not increasing or decreasing the assessments in the role, which is attached as Exhibit A for reference only." Do we have the original role?
Although we have the original role.
So Mike, are you cool with us just not having it attached, saying assessments in the role?
Well, I'm sure there is the original role, just attach it as Exhibit A. The original role would have divided those costs of one, or sorry, 243, 844, the per parcel assessment of 24, 384, and 40 cents. There was a role that was approved, so just.
What I'd suggest is that on the page that has Exhibit A at the top, that we change the language there, take out supplemental special assessment role, and use whatever the language was on the Daleview.
You mean, it says, "The Township Board is not increasing or decreasing the assessment in the role."
Where it says Exhibit A, it says currently supplemental special assessment role, right? And you know, we're not doing a supplemental special assessment role. We're using the original role as approved on October 12, 2021.
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm saying is delete paragraph one in its entirety and replace it with the number one from Daleview, which is, "The Township Board is not increasing or decreasing the assessments in the role, which is attached as Exhibit A for reference only."
Right, and then, and then on the page where it says Exhibit A, cross out supplemental special assessment role, and use whatever the language was on the label for Exhibit A and Daleview.
That's what we just.
Yeah.
We gotta go to three, to the Mark Brazo, 3.75.
Yes, then we get to section three, which would be to change the interest rate to 3.75.
Yep.
Exhibit A we don't need?
We don't have.
We.
I can attach later.
Yeah, we, we, we've referenced it, and we will attach it. It exists. We just don't.
It is, it is just the original role.
It exists.
Correct.
Yeah.
The only, the only other change is you'll have to change the title of the resolution.
Got it.
Getting rid of. Half the extra $1,000. Well, the township's only paying 90% of that $10,000.
It was picking out the other car.
No, I didn't hear that. I did not hear.
He's very soft spoken.
Yeah. You said it only once, and quietly. So I repeated it.
I heard it.
Yes.
So I think we're clear. Is someone prepared to move the resolution as modified?
Are those friendly amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there's no motion. We haven't made a motion on the resolution yet. So someone needs to make the motion to approve the resolution.
I move we adopt the attached resolution as amended by this body's support.
So moved by risers, support by Flintoff. Oh, is there further discussion?
No, it's a roll call vote. Do we need to wait for Mark?
Mark's back, so we can do a roll call vote.
So we have on the table, Mark, amended resolution.
With the 3.75 interest rate.
Yep.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Brazo?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Okay. That brings us to Wagner Ridge Court Special Assessment District Role Correction. In this instance, the correction is to reduce the amount of the role because of actual costs going down, and as well as correcting the omission, the error of omission of the language referencing the payment over time.
I move adoption of the attached resolution confirming the corrected special assessment role for the Wagner Ridge Court Street Campaign Special Assessment District.
Well, remember, we have to modify it a little bit.
The modification of 3.75.
There's also another modification that we need to make to the resolution as it appeared in the packet. And that is, the amount has actually changed since the meeting packet was put forward.
So one, one more thing, though. This is one of the examples where there was an estimated cost of the administrative fees would be $562. The actual has actually been $1,249. So this is one of those instances where our actual administrative costs are twice what we estimated. So I would caution us before we reduce it too far.
Well, I would, I would like to go forward with the reduction as was presented in the role that was sent out today. And that's actually attached to the summary of costs. And the basis for that is that we don't, you know, we can continue to sort of dicker about the specifics of the costs that the township has incurred. But the reality is that we, you know, we did, and we made an effort to try and include, you know, those costs. This is the role that was set based on that. If we start messing around with that, then we will have, we won't have a role that we can adopt. And that will put us behind schedule. And I would, I would recommend, especially because the costs have been reduced overall, and the stuff that we're arguing about, or unsure about in terms of township's costs is relatively minor at the margins, that we go forward with the costs as reflected in this role, which would mean that we would be changing the resolution, the amount of the resolution.
That's fine.
Section one on page two to a cost of $105,001.25, I believe. Is that right?
18% less than I had that right.
Just a second.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah.
Good management there on somebody's part there.
Decrease the per parcel assessment to $6,708 per parcel. So those are, the two changes to the resolution would be those two figures in section one, page two of the resolution, and change the interest rate to 3.75.
Say, Will, I don't, I don't mean to penny venture, but this is a true penny venture. Should be nine cents. That's what's on there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's a best pinch.
All right, sorry, sorry. We wanted to match the role, so thank you for pointing that out. Nine cents, $6,709 per parcel. Click Flintoff.
Sure. I want to touch on another issue too, and I handed out the spreadsheet here, because I think it's important as we think about the special assessments going forward. It's something that Dan mentioned, but I want to talk about why I raised it. It's because special assessments are supposed to be assessed based on generally the benefit. Okay, the benefit. And nine times out of 10, the cost and the benefit align, one to one. And that's what you want. You want the amount that's assessed proportionate to the amount of benefit that each homeowner is getting. And certainly, you know, and I know I'm a neighbor of Dan's, and I know how good the road looks, you know, and what care he has taken with it. So it's not that. But I would say that what happened was, I got some information. I talked to our township engineer. I talked to Luke Kitter. I talked to Wanda at Cadillac. And what Wanda explained to me is that it was her subcontractor, Dome, who went ahead and did the driveway replacement, partial replacement, and it was not part of her scope. It was not part of what she approved. So the bill came to the township, we said no. And I think it's perfectly fine if this board wants to say, good job, you know, fine, you know, partial driveway replacement, no cost, fine. But I want to say that the principle of the SADs is that you're supposed, we're supposed to be assessing based on benefit. And so I provided this chart here, because what you have is one parcel owner getting more benefit than being assessed.
I disagree.
And, no, no, hold on, hold on. I'm just saying, and, and, and I'm not, I, I can go either way on this. But it's important, I think, to just note that that was a zero-cost benefit that came out of the project that was never supposed to happen. That part of the project, according to Wanda.
Well, let's be clear about it, that it wasn't a benefit really to him as a property owner.
They replaced his apron on his driveway near the, near the, near the road to do the work that they had to do to direct the water to the rock. I mean, he doesn't have a nice curb at the bottom. He's got a concrete funnel that stops people from parking there.
Oh, no, not the curbs, all that was.
I'm just saying, we can't cherry pick, I like the curb, I don't like the curb, I don't like the apron.
He's not referring to the curb.
I'm not talking about the curb at all.
But it's all part of it.
Well, in either case, the driveway wasn't, but he had a driveway before, he has a driveway now. I don't know where the benefit was from. I have a driveway, maybe some little newer driveway, which now doesn't match his concrete. I'd argue it was a detriment, but.
It all directs that.
I don't see it as a benefit.
It all directs, it's got a wide cul-de-sac at the bottom of a hill, and the water all comes sloping down there. And then it collects it and it directs it off of there for the benefit of everybody. And, and, and I'm not about to accuse Mr. McKenzie of saying, gee, I would like a nicer driveway where it meets the road. I just don't think that's what happened. And it is not something we had to bear cost for, right? So I don't think we, I don't know that we need to talk about this if it's not costing money. I just.
But why shouldn't the benefit be shared?
It was, there was no benefit.
Well, the benefit of it, the benefit is shared.
He had a driveway now, there was no benefit.
The benefit is shared. The water is being channeled away from the road.
You're talking about the driveway.
I know, but that's, that's the change to the driveway as part of channeling the water.
Let's even say it didn't, so what?
No, no, and, and, and let's say it didn't, I mean.
Was there a cost?
Because there was no cost. Cadillac ate it.
Well, then, it's, we're arguing about, nothing to argue about, I mean.
It's fine.
I hear, I hear what you're saying in principle.
And that's what I'm saying.
I just don't think it applies here.
And that's fine. But what I'm saying is, when you look at the benefit and the cost, and I'm not going to the mat on this. I'm just saying, like, it's important, because this was not part of the project plan. This was not authorized by the prime. This was something that the sub decided to do later on. It was not part of the drainage plan. It was not about the common. And so we need to be mindful of that. And I think it goes back to project management. We need to define roads committee or commission, whatever you choose. I would prefer to be the roads committee. We need better definition of project management, particularly when you have a resident who's willing to put in $300 to be a project manager. We need to make sure that we have definition. Are we going to pay Joe Maynard to be our project manager? Are we going to have volunteers, Luke Kitter? I mean, we have so many different models of how we do this. I would just say it goes back to standardizing the project management.
Agreed, old, something, agreed. Let's file the motion for, what do we have to do to move this one?
Someone just has to move it.
Before I forget what I want to say about this whole discussion tonight. This, put it on the list, because one other time, there was on Honey Creek, a resident. A resident who talked to somebody and it was a driveway thing again. So in the process to set up.
Future.
You know, a process, it needs to be discussed.
Okay.
We've had two instances.
Okay.
And the other thing I would like to also have in that process, insist upon a contact person.
Yes.
In the neighborhood.
I, I agree.
A contact person for, wash your engineer.
Can I call the question?
Do one better, you have a whole list they can subscribe to. Hey, submit your email address, we blast out to you. We set up a separate page here, there's all kinds of way you can set up, I mean, better communication.
So we have a motion, can I move us back to our task at hand before we started getting up in another rabbit hole? Um, so we have a motion by Brazil, do we have a second by riser? Um, unless there's further discussion, I would like to call the role.
And the.
This is the motion, yeah, so the motion on the resolution is with the three changes, uh, uh, in sections one and three.
Three point seven five percent as well, right?
Yeah, that's the section three.
Yep.
Okay, yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brazil?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
All right, that brings us to our final item, which is the Westview Way, Southwood Court.
Second, Mr. Clary, uh, we, at this juncture, the assessment is evenly divided between fifteen residents in our share.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, fully clear.
No, the, the role as, um, is corrected today is the one that's attached.
Okay, I'm going to report back to my neighbors, I, the kinds of communication, I want to make sure.
Well, you can also tell them that the interest rate was changed to three point seven five for payment over time.
I apologize for being glorious earlier. I'm good at this.
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's an evolving situation.
You have a little motion going up here too, so it's okay, we're all here. I'm from an Italian family, it's just like I'm being home.
So, just without the pasta.
Yeah, without the food, yeah.
I'm not sure.
So, um, we have, um, an agenda item that we are commencing just before eleven, so we're meeting our rules of order. Um, and the agenda item is Westview Way, Southwood Court Supplemental Special Assessment Role. And here, um, there was a need for corrections, um, and the cost in the original role was, uh, somehow, uh, the wrong number was used. It should have been, uh, three thousand dollars higher. Um, and, um, there was a, a problem. And here, I think this actually does get to, to some degree to what happens when you don't have a project manager. So this particular SAD, um, when it came, um, for the, before the board in early twenty twenty-one, um, the board, uh, heard from a couple of people during a public hearing who were opposed to it. And the people who supported it had been told they didn't need to come because the only reason that you would come to speak is to register your opposition so that you could later challenge him in the tax tribunal if you chose. But the board did not understand that, and so the fact that there were these people who spoke very strongly against it, um, and there were none of the people who, the majority who had signed petition in favor of it, there to speak in favor of it, the board voted down the engineering phase. So that meant that Joe was not part of the process. It fell to the neighborhood leader to salvage it, um, as a project. Because the special assessment district had been created, um, the intent to create it was there. It's just that the engineering phase was turned down and Joe was not really a part of it in the same way. That happened also sort of with Wagner Ridge Court, but in that case, it was a different circumstances and, and there was actually an engineer who lived in the neighborhood who was basically funding things. But, um, in this instance, when they sat down and they were trying to decide on the scope of work, um, that neighborhood leader said, well, I, you know, we don't need to pay for people to reconstitute the edge of the road.
So they were aware of it.
They were aware that that was something that the, um, was a part of the project that needed to occur. And at the time, he said, we can dispense with that because we'll just do it ourselves. Well, so now we are at the point where the work has occurred, the road commission's permit requires that the shoulders be reconstituted within three days of construction, which hasn't occurred. But the reason that there's that three day sort of urgency to it is the road is vulnerable to damage when the, when the shoulders aren't reconstituted.
And, well.
Uh, clerk Flintoff?
So, and a little bit more background too, because when the board rejected it, that was in, uh, February twenty twenty-one. But then we went through the whole process, I guess, based on the community's estimate. I think we've paid you only twelve hundred dollars, so you did no, no engineering design for this.
We only processed the permit based on the estimate that was provided.
Okay. Um, so we, we did say, we thought our estimate was a hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-three, based on the information we had, so, I mean, the costs are actually higher. I would say we were not informed by an engineer, so note to self. But this does seem like a legitimate increase for the owners to bear.
Well, somehow the wrong number got put in because they had in hand.
What do you mean wrong number, where?
Well, originally, when we adopted the, when we set the role back in October twelfth, twenty twenty-one, somehow a number was put in, I don't know how, um, maybe because sometimes I think templates get reused and maybe a number didn't get switched, but somehow in the rush.
Right, not the fourteen four, but the three thousand, exactly, right?
Well, yeah, the three thousand dollar difference, right? So, so there was the, the in hand, a contract from Cadillac that was a higher number, but for some reason that number didn't get used. And then we wouldn't be talking about the three thousand dollar difference.
Okay, so, and I just want to make, make sure I'm clear. So when we were deliberating and deciding, and then I signed and certified as official, we were using the hundred and nine thousand.
That I don't know what, what was.
I'm just saying, when did, uh, when did we?
Well, at some, at some point we surfaced, I think it was actually in the spring, we surfaced the issue that a contract with Cadillac, the bid from Cadillac to do the work was diff, was a higher number than what had been approved. And I don't know at what point that was merged into this.
So maybe that conflated somehow along the way.
So can we, can we invite, uh, Joe up to the?
Yeah.
Well, we could also, we could also invite actually Wanda, who is here from Cadillac and has been sitting.
Oh, hey, Wanda.
Patiently and watching the, watching the meeting. Um, but my understanding, Joe, is that there was a quote, uh, from Cadillac for the higher number.
I, I couldn't find that quote in my records. The only one I ever found in our, in our emails actually was only the, the hundred and eight, which excluded the shoulders. I went back through and searched for that because you'd asked me to.
Yeah.
I couldn't find the other quote, so I don't know what Wanda did.
So what's the basis?
I came here more, more regarding Wagner Ridge because of the credits and whatnot, in case I need explaining. As far as Westview Way goes, we quoted it several different times, different scenarios. So there were many quotes floating out there, but the one we settled on was the one we, when they settled on, is the one we signed the contract for.
The hundred and nine thousand? I don't, I don't expect you to know that right off the top of your head.
I know, it doesn't have shoulders with it. It doesn't have shoulders with it because at the time we talked about it, I told them I don't like progress and they, they would do their own, so we.
So, so, so the, so the homeowners were aware they were going to do their.
Well, it wasn't, it was a group and some were there, but not all.
That's the problem.
So it was non-site meetings and that is where that conversation.
Does anybody know how much consensus they reached within that? It was a sixty percent, fifty percent, twenty percent, any?
It was divisive, I don't remember the details.
Yeah, the original, the original role, there were a couple of property owners who were outspoken opposed to it. And they're the ones who came to the meeting where we turned down, the board turned down the engineering phase. But the majority of the street, the property owners had signed a petition creating the SAD.
I know none of these four were less than sixty-five percent. They're all considerably higher than fifty.
So they, they, they met, they were, the measurements were taken in terms of frontage, in terms of the percentage. Every, all of these qualified. Um, and in fact, I think, um, one of the people who came and was outspoken in, in opposition to it later came and spoke in favor of it when it was up for the construction.
Yeah, that, that road was a mess. I mean, that road might, 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 might as well have been a dirt road, it was getting.
It was, it was very badly deteriorated and, and so we were caught, you know, we, we.
So are these accurate costs and are we required to pass them along?
I think that is, that is correct.
And I would move to adopt the attached resolution confirming the supplemental special assessment role for the Westview Way, Southwood Court Street Paying Special Assessment District and authorize the increased expenditures of up to seventeen thousand, four hundred from account four one one dash zero 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 dash eight two three dot three twenty-seven to complete the project. And I would also, um, move that the portion on page three regarding interest rate be lowered from five percent to three dot seven five.
Well, there's, can I make a friendly amendment?
Yes, that's the motion.
Um, that's the motion. Um, I, I would second that with, uh, the qualification that the numbers that are in the draft resolution in section one need to be changed slightly to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, fifteen.
All in time.
Yeah, I'm looking at the right one here. Hundred and fifty, hundred twenty-five thousand, fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents.
And per parcel?
And, and per parcel to seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents?
I may, we'll look it up. Not sure we get the cents.
So it's slightly lower than.
So it's, it's the, it's the role, it's the role that's attached, uh, the other role is attached to the sheet that I handed out with the costs.
Yeah, it's too many. Last minute sheets.
There's another issue. Well, it's the, the role changed, um, as a result of the change in the, in, as they were on the bottom. So with that, um, I would second your, if it's a friendly amendment.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. So is there any further discussion?
You seconded the motion.
Yes, I did. So it's a motion by risers, uh, support by Hathaway, um, with the two, the three changes, uh, to section one and section three on page two of the resolution.
And, sorry, I want to make sure we didn't miss something. Oh, sorry, the changes in paragraph one, page two.
Yeah, changes are in paragraph one.
Got it, okay, I'm good.
And, um, paragraph three, the interest rate. And then, of course, it would be attaching the role that matches what we did in section one.
Gotcha.
Do you vote?
Uh, yes, please call the role.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Brazil?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
That is the end of our agenda.
I'm going for adjourned.
I second.
There's other comments?
There isn't.
Oh, there's, oh, not for a special meeting.
Not for a special meeting.
Got it.
So we are, we are ready to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at.
Recording stopped.
At oh three.
You got to give Little List a lot of credit for preventing the rabbit holes because we go down a lot of ways.